First up, we have our consent agenda. We have the bills and a lot of CRMC violations. And also a public notice of a new oyster farm to be built on the Secconic River, roughly about Gary, half a mile, quarter mile up from the Glen Pier.
Yeah, just a little bit opposite and a little bit further north than the old Darrell and Boden.
Okay.
Underneath the question.
Do I have a motion to receive these and place them on file? Mr. Kessin?
No, because I'm not going to vote for the bills. But number two, I have a question for Mr. Crosby when we finally get a motion.
Okay. Well, we'll do it one at a time for the bills. There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six, one. Next up is item number two, a CRMC finding. Mr. Crosby, if you can come up front.
It's a pretty easy question. It's notice five.
Cease and desist order?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I typically only see these CRMC cease and desist and CRMC items when the property is in Portsmouth.
Yeah.
Is that listed, is this one listed wrong?
No, it's, the property is in Barrington. The person who is, the cease and desist order is directed to, lives here in Portsmouth. So I guess that's why.
I thought it was always where the act happened. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do I have a motion to receive and place items two through six on file?
Don't move. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we'll be sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. We have an entertainment license with a fee waiver and a victorious license for the fee waiver for the Penfield School at 110 Sandy Point Avenue for their annual cornucopia fine arts sale on November 3rd.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn for the Board of Licensed Commissioners?
We got one more?
We got one more, yeah.
Is there one with a fee waiver?
I did both the entertainment and the victorious license both at the same time.
Thank you very much. I could not pay attention.
Motion to adjourn as the Board of Licensed Commissioners.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have our minutes to approve from the meeting, town council meetings from nine thirteen, fifteen, and twenty-four. Are there any questions on any of the minutes?
Mr. President, I'll be abstaining from nine thirteen and nine fifteen. I was absent.
I must have been out on one, too, and I didn't catch it.
Okay, so let's do them one at a time.
Yeah, but I gotta go read it to find out which one I wasn't in.
You were here for nine thirteen.
Was it the, I made it to Prudence.
Nine fifteen.
On the fifteenth, I was missing?
I was not here on the fifteenth. You were here on the thirteenth with myself, Mr. Kessin, and Ms. Ujifusa.
It says you were here on all three.
So you were here all three.
All right.
So we'll take them one at a time. So for the thirteenth, if Ms. Ujifusa, Mr. Kessin, and Mr. Gleason can make a motion to receive.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes four to zero with three abstentions. Next, we have the Prudence Island meeting, which everyone was there except for Ms. Pedro. So, a motion to approve those.
So, seven. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion passes six, zero, and one. And then finally, the twenty-fourth, when we were all back together.
Motion approved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, we have tax vouchers for 2018, 1009-01 to 2018, 1009-05.
Motion to approve tax vouchers, 2018, 1009-01 through 05.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Rayner, Town Administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to College School School, for some time now, we've been working on future plans for that building. Last week, we issued a pre-solicitation notice. The intent of that notice is to get inputs on details that may be incorporated into the final request for proposals. The pre-solicitation ends on November 1st, and we hope to have a final solicitation on the street shortly thereafter. In the notice, we are seeking information to ensure that a subsequent solicitation, or RFP, is consistent with the needs and capabilities of prospective bidders while adhering to certain objectives for the use of the property, such as providing a funding source for town operations, maintenance of compatibility with the abutting sports field, continued town ownership of the property, stabilization and improvement of the property, and fire and building code upgrades appropriate for the intended use. With respect to the State Traffic Commission, some good news. Last week, the State Traffic Commission approved our request for the installation of a traffic signal on East Main Road at the intersection of Linden Lane. Additionally, the State Traffic Commission approved a trial period for a road diet on East Main Road to be conducted before the resurfacing project in 2019. The road diet will be tried at the northern end of East Main, so from Stub Toe Lane to Turnpike. As part of that project, the state also agreed to install a pedestrian activated flashing crossing beacon light at East Main Road and Quaker Hill Lane down at Atria because of several past pedestrian accidents there. They're putting the request for the Linden Lane traffic light into the queue of approved projects and estimate it will be 2023 or '24 before the light is installed. Then, the Bureau of Justice Assistance has awarded the town $2,535 to be used for the purchase of bulletproof vests. So hats off to the police department. This is an annual program that the police regularly apply for. And then, not to leave the fire department out, just a word to everyone that the annual Fire Department Open House will be held this Saturday, October 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That concludes my report. Mr. President.
Questions for Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kessin?
I have one. On the State Commission, we didn't ask for a flashing speed zone light through that, through that area when we made the request?
I don't think we did, but I'll go back and check the request and the letter that was sent.
I think it was just an activated light.
I wasn't sure whether it was a speed because that's been a problem.
And so we need to commence arm twisting to move up that 2023, '24 timeframe.
Yeah, I wanted to wait for it to get out of the planning and into the queue, and then we'll make an appointment with the powers that be at the DOT to see if we can't get that moved up.
Mr. Gleason?
Can you repeat what you said about the crosswalk?
Yeah, it's a pedestrian-controlled activated flashing light. It's called a crossing beacon, and it will be at East Main Road at Quaker Hill Lane, so the Atria complex, so people can get across East Main with a pedestrian light, flashing light.
So it's an aerial device as opposed to in the tar?
I have not seen the design, so I don't know.
The ones that I have seen are, they're the actual crossing where people will walk across and they have lights around the triangle that you click the diamond.
Yeah.
And then when somebody wants to walk across, they push the button and it starts flashing the sign. So it's not a red light that will stop.
Right. That seems like a simple request, and that's one that we really should strive to get sooner than later, especially with all the, you know, people that live on the streets here and walk down to Clements Market, take their life in danger.
I agree. I'll work on it.
Did you say that that was going to get put in, in conjunction with the trial diet?
Yeah, they want to put that in with the trial diet, which will be done probably in the spring or summer of next year.
Any other questions for Mr. Rayner? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have resignations and appointments. We have a reappointment for Mr. Tibbetts to the planning board.
Motion to approve?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And we have a new appointment to the zoning board of review.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this appointment. I understand there's another application in, and it seems like we should give folks a chance to apply because it's only been a couple weeks since Mr. Hall resigned.
I would agree. Let me go on a second.
Okay.
I would just ask one question. Do we ever advertise for this to be open?
No. But we don't, we're going to be advertising for something. We're going to put out an advertisement anyway, so we'll be able to.
Okay, good.
But technically, we do not have to advertise for the, but we will. So I guess my motion would be to wait, delay this item until the notice is published in the paper.
When are we going to publish that?
Probably next, within the next week.
Okay, so postpone this until the first meeting in November?
November.
Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay. Second? Thank you, Mr. Gleason. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, I know we have a very large crowd here for Old Business One, but our owner's representative for Old Business Two has another meeting to get to this evening, and I have a feeling that Old Business One may take a little while. So if I could have a motion to quickly move up Old Business Two, just to get an update on the police station construction?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven, zero. Mark, where are you? There you are. Thank you, sir. Give us the good news.
I hear a report just over a month ago indicating that we have, if not all of our site-related building-related issues, as you saw within the package that you received this month, we have a local building, September, for $846,030.74, which has, which is the single largest concrete building on the project to date. We have a site contractor relocalizing on site, and we're trying to move it along a rapid pace. The updated overall project construction schedule indicates mid to late December completion of the new building, and appearing here this evening, so that I can answer any questions that you may have.
All right, I got one silly question that's been bugging me for the past three, four, five weeks. Why can't we put windows in? And where are they? It just seems like it, you can't get stuff done inside if the outside's not all buttoned up.
I agree with you entirely. The windows that were specified are aluminum windows from the National Railway Bachelor, and given the incredible economic activity, they'll be timed for 16 to 10 weeks. And next week is week number 20 in July.
Okay. It just seems that that would move the project along a little quicker.
Even the meantime, the contractor at the loan expense has temporarily imposed the building to drive the building out of humidity, of the moisture elements, to enable and permit the rough wiring, rough mechanical, rough plumbing, rough fire protection elements. So it's not holding up the progress of the project, but from a appearance and aesthetic standpoint, it certainly does.
Mr. Kessin?
Yeah, I have a question. Just, I think in the last two weeks, we've, we've had a, I don't know what it is. We typically try to drive our developers into New England-style buildings, and all of a sudden, in the last two weeks, we have this ugly thing above the roof. Was that a change order?
No, sir.
That was not, that was not in the architect's rendering, so that was...
It may not have been on the architect's pretty pictures, but it was certainly shown on the contract documents as part of the mechanical...
Because we missed railings and other appendages on the building, is that why it looks so ugly? I mean, it doesn't look like a quaint New York, New England building, like we ask most of our developers in our, in our planning to do.
These questions are better served for the architect as to why it is as high and tall as it is. These questions are, I can certainly take this information or this observation back. It's not, you are not unique in the observation that this exposed mechanical tower is the one thing that you see. We're brainstorming ways to conceal it or make it less visually...
Unappealing?
That's a good word. Thank you.
I mean, it's just, it's just an albatross sitting on the top of a room, and we ask every developer that comes to town to make a quaint New England building, and we are exempt. I get it. The town is exempt from our own building codes.
But we're not exempt from ugly, I guess.
Well, I don't know if we're exempt from ugly because there's no money left, but I just figured we did something that changed it, that it couldn't be on the ground.
No.
And had to be hung on the top of a roof.
It was always scheduled to be there. I think that the size and magnitude of it surprised everyone.
So is that because of the servers?
The what, server?
Yeah. The server room?
No. I mean, yes, the server room is cooled, but that is not the compelling reason as to why the mechanical unit is the size that it is.
Can we wrap it somehow in, you know, a cloud?
A permanent cloud?
It's been a topic of discussion at our construction meetings and at our staff meetings, and I look forward to reporting back to you as to the solutions that we brainstorm that are more visually acceptable while not costing.
And not diminishing the effectiveness of the unit as well?
Of course.
Yeah. All right. Any other councils?
Yeah, I'm not done yet. On our original reporting, we had every proposed change order. We had the proposed change order number, we had the value, and we also had, in your, in your very first report, we had the definition of what each action was, and in the last two meetings, that have, that's gone down to zero, which bothers me a lot, number one. But number two, in the cover letter to your, to the council, you also state that we have anywhere from, well, because we're at the point of overrun, right? So we're at the point of being $50,000 to $150,000 above what we believe the cost is today. I think it's in that last paragraph right there. And, and in your first and previous reports, there were always proposed change orders, what the value was, and, and what was being done with that extra money or lack of extra money. That's, seems, that has seemed to have fallen off the report. Is there a reason why?
Well, my oversight, I apologize for having not included the complete and comprehensive change order proposal log for the council's review. I will make sure to rectify that and forward it to Rich, and he can distribute it to you as early as this week. I think the reason that it wasn't included is that all open PCOS, potential change orders or change requests, had actually been converted into change orders. So what you saw at those earlier previous snapshots were things that had not yet been converted from a PCO, potential change order, into a formal modification of the contract. And so by completion of change orders, or through change order 10, at the time of my report preparation, I believe all the current items that had been submitted, reviewed, and approved had been converted into a change order. But I will, from here on out, make sure that my monthly report includes the entire PCO log so that you can compare and contrast the two documents as to what's been acted on and what's still open, or what has been rejected, or what has been, is still under review.
So my next question is this. In your old reports, and still in this one, you had a PC change order called PCR 16R1. There was an R2 for $80,000. The last time you sat in front of us, it was, had to have, it was valued at about $86,000. That has since fallen off this, this report?
No, sir. It's incorporated within the change orders.
I don't see 16R2 in any of the change orders, five through 10. And originally, they were hanging below four, which is when you were with us the last time. So I don't see where...
Yeah, I do believe it was incorporated into change order number nine. I know that Rich, I'm sorry, the town administrator, has forwarded to you actual physical copies of all the change orders?
No, I don't think we've seen those, but I, I might have got an email that I didn't read.
Okay. So I can clarify that, and we'll be happy to report back to you.
So the $86,000 that was in PCR 16R2, which was 86, got dropped to include and added two other change orders and got it down to 76, 4111?
It was reduced significantly through a review by the architect and the engineer, as well as the owner's representative and all team members working together, going through the requested change order. It reduced the cost of that change order request significantly, and that's why it was converted into a change order.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Gleason?
I don't think I'm repeating the question, but can you just explain what the change orders were for the building interior unsuit and the building exterior unsuit? Those are two of the largest change orders, and I just want to clarify to the general public that we don't see the change orders. We, as councils, are not privy to that information.
Certainly. Well, at the early onset of the project, as you know, just over a year ago, in October of 2017, the project commenced with site activities. Work commenced through the winter of 2017, which was an extraordinary wet and cold year. And during, the contractor kept working through this, and during the course of the project, we encountered unsuitable materials, that is dirt, block, ledge, and other materials that did not pass the required parameters by the geotechnical engineer nor structural engineer. It requires a complete removal of those materials and import of suitable material satisfactory for backfill, satisfactory for compaction, satisfactory for concrete slabs. As you know, this is a masonry building, a load-bearing structure, and it's very important that the soil and the strength are at its weight-bearing capacity. It's the most important thing that we can do, and we have to import a significant amount of material in order to make sure that the building's on a solid foundation and will pass the 70-foot, five-year lifespan that the defect is unable to face.
So that covers both interior and exterior, the costs are split that way?
The materials on the outside of the foundation wall, as well as on the inside of the foundation wall, that has peels, slabs, et cetera, sand, et cetera, would be rescuing up. So we have two separate panels. We've iterated them with two different change order requests, so we can deal with them in a critical capacity.
Okay, thanks. I thought it had to do with inferior materials or something of that nature, but I guess technically it's inferior dirt, site, site conditions.
Very silky-sol.
Okay. When would National Grill Grid tie in that hole out on East Main? When is that supposed to happen?
I believe it's scheduled for November.
November. Are they dragging their feet on that?
No.
Okay, that's just part of your schedule to wait?
We're on temporary power right now. On the contractor's side, they gave for all the current utilities within the schedule. There's a transformer, a laborer, there's a connection, a backup generator, and all of these things have to be installed in the proper sequence, tested, certified.
Okay. It just seems like our original schedule was for October, and now you're telling me it's November. That's why I asked whether there's slippage on their part.
Yeah, there has been, as previously indicated, about eight weeks of overall slippage. Some of it was due to the unsuitable soil issues, the cold and the weather delay claim, which we negotiated for zero, for zero sum of dollars. We did extend their contract, though. We gave them the time without giving them money. I thought that was what they were meaning for the town of Portsmouth. There have been other delay by other claims, but these have been rejected by the architect, and we don't need this trade that they're going to come back and cost the town of Portsmouth more than that.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Ujifusa?
Just a couple of questions. Am I on here? When the original 2014 study was done for this police station, it was estimated that it would cost $10 million to build it. Is that true? And was it also in that study that one should add 5% each year to the cost to account for inflation and other cost increases?
Yes. In the study performed by Gomis Roseanne Anderson, back in the 2019, 2014 slash 2015 timeframe, they estimated the cost of the building at $9,975,000. This report was taken out of their report with their anticipated timeline. That included a construction cost, in essence, four years ago, of $7,360,943, just for construction cost of the building. As you know, on bid day in 2017, the cost of the building was $8,310,000, so it was approximately $1 million more. Had the town added 5% escalation, and they also recommended an additive number for inflation as well, the project would have, instead of being $10 million, it would have been a question of $12 million overall project budget. We're on track to deliver a project to the town for approximately $10 million. So our overruns at less than $150,000 that we're currently tracking as the worst-case scenario is a whole lot better than a multi-billion dollar cost overrun. Thank you.
I actually, I actually have a question for Mr. Rayner. Go ahead. Thank you. You didn't nod, so I, maybe I wasn't looking. This $41,000 that, that is unused allowance on the base contract, that had a PCR change, did we approve that? So we're not going to pave the, is that the parking lot?
That's, yes, well, and no, I mean, there's, there's some credits there, but the bulk of that is the unpaving, not the unpaving, but the, they would do a binder coat of the parking lot. We would wait because they're going to be doing the binder. Oh, I'm being corrected here.
If I may, if we, if any contract, if we, if we, we're certain, thought or prudent to add, that is, the contractor adds to their, it adds to their base bid price. In this case, I think there were three or four allowances, and total 41,000 in the aggregate. They were utility connection fees, they were cable connection fees, they were miscellaneous fees from third parties that service the town and serviced the building that we thought we might have to incur.
That, that also included the, the cells?
No, sir.
Because we bid those at 186, and they came in at 230?
Correct. So the unused allowances, these connection fees, these miscellaneous allowances, and if you'd like a listing of them, they're in the, they're in the specifications, there's a copy of them here in Town Hall, or I can, you know, photocopy and scan and provide to the town administrator to transmit to the council. We do not believe that we're going to have to expend any of those $41,000 of allowances that were within the base contract. That is what that is. This has nothing to do with the paving credit, and it also has nothing to do with the cells. The cell allowance has been exhausted, and there was a change order to cover the additive costs of the, of the detention area that was, that was delivered in an amount higher than the allowance.
Thank you very much. I have one more thing, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to have the solicitor in, in writing determine if we are in breach of rural state law or the, or the town charter if we exceed this $10 million.
If we exceed, I could say no right now. I mean, that's just the amount we borrowed.
I'd rather have, I'd rather have it in writing.
The same amount we borrowed.
I know, but we have a proposed cost of, of at least 50 to 100, above, 150 above that in this cover letter. So legally, I would like to have a written document from you as your interpretation of the rural state law and our charter, and in fact, who has the authorization to go above the $10 million when the people actually only voted $10 million? That's my motion, and to have you write, I don't know, a written opinion on that.
That's second for discussion.
Because I don't think we can go over $10 million.
It's a contractual process. There's a architect, there's a contractor, there's an owner's rep. We've got to follow the process set forth in the contract.
Well, we can take stuff out of it like we have in the past on other stuff. Again, I would like to have that written opinion. I mean, the people said, and there's a bunch of people in this room today, they said $10 million. I don't think, they were ever told $12 million with the projected... I don't think they were ever told $12 million with the projected 5% for each year. I know they didn't get the 2015 trade study that said we were going to lease furniture, and I would like that in writing from you.
I would oppose that motion. I don't think our town solicitor should be paid with tax dollars to research a question that is clearly, obviously answered. I think he's prepared to answer it right now, that the answer is no. So I would just like to save some taxpayer dollars and not have that question put forward like that.
It seems more like a rhetorical question.
Are you prepared to end? I mean, you -- someone answered.
Follow the process in the contract. We're not -- if there's change orders that increase the cost of the contract, that's not a violation of the charter. It's really sort of impossible to answer the question as posed.
As posed.
Well, I think it's kind of a rhetorical question, not really a serious question.
Well, if the voters voted $10 million, and that's all they said, the council is the only one that has the authority to go above that if they choose to do that, correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
I move the question.
There's two. He asked for two things. One is the charter, and one is the state laws. Are there any state laws that would be applicable, say, once you pass a referendum to spend $10 million that those taxpayers have voted for? Can you exceed it as a town? You can't.
If the contract ends up getting increased more than $10 million, the issue of the contract and the price to be paid is different than the bond, which is the amount of money we borrow.
So does contract law supersede state law that says that may indicate we can't spend more than the $10 million?
We can't borrow more than the $10 million.
That refers on -- When Massachusetts did the big dig, the cost overruns were legendary. And I know the architect and the construction company were all suing each other for money, but nobody was raising a question of constitutional law.
That's federal money. They just keep throwing money at us.
I move the question, Mr. President.
All right. We have a verbal opinion from the solicitor. I don't think we need much more than that, but all those in favor of receiving their written opinion? And opposed? Nay? All right. Mr. Fitzmaurice, do you have a quick question?
Maybe not quick.
Behind you, Mark. You can just hang there for a quick second, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, 50, Kristen Court. I have some questions regarding the change order and the processes we seem to be underway. I'm surprised, well, maybe I'm not surprised, but at any rate, we have heard tonight from a number of the members of the council that they have not received any descriptions on change orders. So I guess my first question is, is there anybody on the council that is getting the change orders?
We received the change orders in the past couple of, in the past two updates. They were listed in the updates.
In the very first one, it was listed, Mr. President.
I'm talking about not a line item in a spreadsheet. I'm talking about the descriptions. I presume they're written down somewhere. So the question has a point, and that is, first, as the signers of the contract, the council should be the ones, in my judgment, that are making changes to the contract. And each one of these change orders clearly increases the price, at least in some part of it, and we should all understand that the contract does a number of different parts. But I don't know who's approving change orders. Do you?
It's a combination of Mr. Rayner, our owner's representative, that we pay to oversee the building of the building itself. We have a contract with Mark and his company at ABM to make sure that the building is done properly. Because I will say that I'm not a construction expert, and neither is anybody else sitting up here, other than maybe I'll give Mr. Aguirre some leeways, since he's an engineer.
What about me?
Three engineers.
Engineering trades, but the point is that I would make is that all of you have been elected to oversee these sort of things. And if we allow them to just run unsupervised by the council, not saying they weren't supervised by someone, unsupervised by the council, and the council gets surprised, I presume you are surprised that you're over the budget, over $10 million, based on the projections and final costs. And cost control is one of the principal functions of senior management in any project, as well as down the lanes. So I guess I'm really concerned by the fact that you guys, ladies and gentlemen, are not making votes on change orders. Because you can get all the recommendations you need, but in the final analysis, you're the ones responsible to the people if this thing goes over, goes north of $10 million, as it appears to be headed that way. So there's that point, and I'm not happy to hear that you're not, apparently not getting the change orders, and I'm not happy to hear that they were not in the report from ABM, because I looked, I've got a copy right here, and I looked, and I noticed there were no pending change orders in this thing, at least as far as I could find. And that is a consequence, not a consequence, that is a very relevant issue, because that projects the further cost overruns. Because once those things were approved, we're further north of $10 million on this project. So I think I've made my case there. Regarding the $10 million, we had an architect. We paid roughly half a million dollars to do a formal, professional estimate of the cost of this building construction, and he did that. And it was advertised to the people as $8 million. It's irrelevant, in my judgment, what some other prediction was, whether it be $12 million or $100 million. I think that's irrelevant. That's the one that should count. The architect's estimate of the cost of this construction, that's supposed to be the rock-bottom truth in all of this business. And if not, then why do we pay the architect to do the work? So that's what I was looking to see, is the architect controlled costs by doing direct supervision to make sure this project is executed according to his plan. And that, you know, when we don't have change orders and we don't know what we're doing half the time, apparently, in regards to the cost of this thing on the council, then you can't go back to the architect, should you ever see him, and ask him, why did this go wrong? Now, his estimate was $8 million, as I said. And if it was really $12 million, then the previous council was deceiving the people of the town of Portsmouth as the cost. Because it was clearly stated that this was going to be $8 million plus additional $2 million for equipment and equipping and furnishing. Yeah, I read it. I've got it at home. I've got a copy of the bond proposal in the ballot two years ago. So as you can see, I'm not very happy to find out that we've changed all the rules since we voted on this. Because credibility of the council is at risk here. If you're going to issue a bond proposal, and it's $10 million, and when you get in trouble on it financially, you say, oh, by the way, it really should have been $12 million, then what are the people supposed to vote on the next time around? When they see $10 million is going to be in their minds, it's going to be 15 or 20 or whatever. And we don't seem to have any cost controls. So I would like to make a recommendation. There are some ways to reduce the costs here. And one of them is the purchase of communications equipment at roughly half a million dollars. I don't know where we're at on that purchase, but if it's not arrived yet, we can use the old equipment. I used to manage communications equipment, and I know that you can use it. In other words, if it's not working now, then we got a problem, but we don't seem to have a problem. So I'm assuming that it is, in fact, working. And I toured the space some months ago, and I can see that there's a lot of improvements to do in the housing issues. In other words, putting the equipment in a properly isolated and cooled room. But the equipment seems to be functioning just fine. It's good quality equipment. It's Motorola. It ought to work just fine. So we can do that. We can say half a million dollars or approximately, and have it. So there are things to be done here in order to get control over these costs. Because I see an estimate from the group that's doing oversight, ABM Group, this tells me that this is going to be somewhere around $50,000 to $150,000 over $10 million. And I also hear that there's, all of the pending change orders are not in this. So I don't know how much the pending change orders come to. I would presume that you add those onto this thing, but I don't really know.
Unless the change order is to lower the cost.
Granted. We might, in theory, and I once signed one that lowered costs, so I know.
So you're suggesting that we cut $500,000 to, say, 50?
No.
And use older equipment that is at the end of its life cycle?
Well, each one of these pieces of equipment, you have individual transmitters and receivers, individual transceivers. And you're going to have to buy them all. You can buy some of them. So it's a scalable decision to choose to do it. But I expect something to be done here, instead of just sitting here saying, well, you know, it's going to cost what it's going to cost. I don't accept that answer. I don't think anybody else should do it.
Well, I don't think anybody up here does accept that answer, and we have a team that's working on it to keep it under the $10 million.
Well, I doubt that I don't see the council engaged on it until tonight.
Okay. The council's been engaged since the beginning of the process. We've been getting regular updates from Mr. Rayner and from, now that Mark's been here a past few times. We have had a pretty good understanding. I'm sorry that you've missed it, but we've had a pretty good understanding where we stand.
I've been reading the documents, too, unless you have documents other than Mark's and Ken's.
I have no other documents than that you have.
I've been reading, too, and, you know, the Brooklyn's out of control at all, at least.
I wouldn't describe a 1% overrun on a $10 million project as out of control. I would call it manageable.
It depends upon how close to the end of it you are.
Point of order, Mr. President. Just out of due respect for all the people who are here waiting to speak on the next item, I would like to request that any of the comments Mr. Fitzmaurice wants to make perhaps be submitted at a different time so that our architect can answer them and our owner's representative, I'm sorry, can answer them, and also that he needs to proceed to another meeting. So I would just suggest that we perhaps table this.
Mr. President, I know this is a bit embarrassing for some people on the council, so I'm willing to sit down.
Excuse, I have to answer that, Mr. President.
No, you don't. No, you don't. You don't, no, Mr. Fitzmaurice, stop.
Yes.
I know it's election season, but knock it off. Please sit down. I mean, please, that's --
If I was sitting on the council, and who knows whether I will or not, I would be embarrassed about this. I've managed projects, not as big as this one.
You would be embarrassed about a 1% possible overrun of a $10 million project?
No, it's not going to be 1%. It's going to be a lot more than that.
Okay, it's going to be a lot more than the -- Mark, any other questions? You do have your marching orders to try and find a way to save that $50 to $100,000 if it's under $10 million, correct?
I do, sir.
And you're working that every single day?
Every day.
Do you think there is a possibility of salvaging some of the current equipment to make it feasible to keep it under that, to cut it out of that $500,000? Which is, so everybody knows, the Motorola contract is a contractual thing with the state of Rhode Island, and unfortunately, that's what we have to use.
Right. And the Motorola contract, off the top of my head, is approximately $469,000. It encompasses not only the electronics, but the hardware, the software, as well as the furniture related to it that is being designed to fit within the new dispatch room. We value-engineered that down from the original cost estimate and the original design that the architect had, which in the 2014 study was well over $1 million. We've reduced that cost by more than half. So I do know that we've already entered into a contract with Motorola and all of their subsidiaries for this equipment, and if you were to cancel that contract, I'm sure there would be some financial risk to the town for termination of a contract without cause. So again, I do have my marching orders. I know what reports you're looking for. My change order log will be sent to the town administrator for distribution. I apologize for it not being included within this package. I thought I had provided you all the information that you sought, and I'll update it.
And we'll see you back here on the 13th?
Of.
November?
I hadn't been asked prior to this. I will --
Well, it's always been the second.
It's the monthly, the first meeting. That's second?
It's always been the second. He couldn't make the last one.
Okay. Well, the second meeting is going to be Thanksgiving week. Are you around Thanksgiving week?
No, sir.
You are not?
I am not around Thanksgiving.
Okay. Can you make it back and give us an update?
I will speak to the town administrator. I will check my schedule, and I will do everything possible.
That is a Tuesday night because of the holiday of the 12th, Veterans Day holiday, so.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good night.
Mr. Allison, I have a question.
In regards to the police station?
Yes.
For us or for him?
Well, for you. Hi, Nancy Howard, 16 Diane Avenue. Who is authorizing the change orders and who is allowed to commit money for the town?
Nobody is allowed to commit any more money to the town.
So who's signing change orders that may increase the price? Who's signing the change orders? I'm just curious.
A combination of Mr. Rayner and our owner's representative.
Okay, so we're having a hired contractor sign our contracts for the police stations?
Mr. President, if I may, the change orders are vetted through the architect and the owner's representative. I sign off on the change orders. The change orders, so far, have not totaled more than the $10 million authorized.
Okay, so we have a contract ceiling of $10 million, so they can spend $10 million any way that they change it around, and then when anything comes above $10 million, someone else has to offer us that.
Yes.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Next up, Old Business Number One. We have a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to Chapter 405, Articles 2 and 5 of the zoning ordinance to define the term farm brewery and allow the use throughout all zoning districts and through a special use permit process.
Mr. President, I will be recusing.
You kind of went on for the rest of the line?
I will.
All right, we'll see you then.
Don't forget about --
I won't. We did forget about you last time, didn't we? I apologize. I will make sure that does not happen. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Gerard Galvin. I represent Donovan Gray Distributing. And as a preliminary matter, I'm happy to report nothing I'm asking for tonight will cost the town a cent. Can you hear me?
You got to speak kind of close in to it when it's, for some reason, when it's a crowded room, it's hard to hear.
I'll try to speak up.
Thank you.
Now, my client, Donovan Gray Distributing, has entered into a purchase and sales agreement to purchase 54 Bristol Ferry Road, the Van Hoff property. But the purchase is contingent upon receiving all municipal and administrative relief necessary to operate Ragged Island Brewery on the site. Now, Ragged Island was opened right here in Portsmouth a few years back by Matthew and Katie Gray and Patrick and Liz Donovan, and I have Matthew Gray here to answer any additional questions you might have about that operation. The property in question has been on the market for quite a long time, and my understanding is there were several proposals to, or offers to, purchase it. But the sellers have held off on those because they were primarily developers looking to put in subdivisions or residential uses out there, and they very much want to continue an agricultural use on the property. And they've given my clients a lot of flexibility to try to figure out how to maintain an agricultural use there, as well as operate their business. Like the Van Hoffs, my clients also feel very strongly about maintaining the roots of their business here in Portsmouth and keeping it here in town, and preserving that land from development and maintaining an agricultural use of that property. And also, very much, they feel strongly about being able to grow their own ingredients, including hops and fruit, and possibly other ingredients on that property. Now, the reason we're here tonight is because there's no farm brewery use on the books here in Portsmouth. And prior to this summer, that was okay because there was a method through our zoning ordinance, your zoning ordinance, to seek relief, to gain the approvals you might want for uses that aren't listed. That changed this summer due to a Superior Court case. That changed this summer due to a Superior Court case that actually came up from your zoning board. And because of that Superior Court decision, after speaking at length with your solicitor and the planner here, we came to the conclusion that the only way to proceed was to seek an amendment to the ordinance to allow for this particular use. We originally prepared an ordinance that was much more specific to the property, the Van Hoff property, and that site. And after working with the solicitor and the planners here, they advised us on a number of issues, and we revised this proposal to make it more applicable to the town as a whole, and, and that's how we got to this result. Some of the changes that were made in that process were to align this use and make it contingent on those properties that are in the farm tax program and tax exempt for farm purposes. And that was important to the town, and we agree with it, in order to make this tie in directly with properties that are actively farming, that this not be a runaround or an endaround to just taking some property and throwing a brewery on it, but to tie it in closely with those that are actively farming the property. The other major change that we made was originally, probably unsurprisingly, we were hoping to have an ordinance that would allow my clients to pursue this use by way. And that has been changed so that anybody seeking to apply for this type of use has to go through the vetting process of seeking a special use permit at the zoning board. And, you know, that's, I think, at this stage, a very important thing for the council to understand, and certainly the public to understand, is that what we're asking for tonight is the very beginning of the road for any project, and there's a long way to go for anybody who wants to engage in this type of use, and they're gonna have to go to the zoning board if this were to be approved. But as for the ordinance itself, I believe what you'll be looking at tonight is whether it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. And we think for a number of reasons that it is, and it would serve the town well in coming years. We have a real estate and zoning expert, Jim Hoole, here tonight to answer questions. He did prepare a report which outlines some of the consistencies with the comprehensive plan. If I may pass one from the clerk. I will run through some of the important areas where I think there are consistencies, and you could see where Jim pointed those out in his report. Now...
Mr. Hamilton? I thought this was a public hearing about a public zoning change.
It is.
Not specific to Ragged Island.
He is going through the zoning, he is going through the actual change of the ordinance right now.
Paid by Ragged Island to support this.
He's discussing the zoning change right now.
I thought this was... Tell me if you can.
No.
And just so, again, the public is clear, the report that I'm passing deals with the proposed ordinance, it does not deal with the specifics of any particular project. But the areas of consistency in the plan that I'd like to highlight for you all is specifically on Element 1 of land use in your comp plan. The goals listed are to manage development to ensure that development has a positive impact on the town that is aesthetically and environmentally compatible, and that Portsmouth's quality of life and coastal and rural resources are protected, that development preserve the rural character of Portsmouth, and that development, that the town manage growth in a way that preserves open space and allows for balanced growth at a level rate that does not overburden municipal facilities or services. So we think the proposal here is very much consistent with that land use element, and we're seeking to balance the development of the property in a way that maintains that rural character and preserves open space. We also think it's very consistent with Element 3, economic development. Your goals in your comp plan, which is your defining document for future development, is the need to continue economic growth and support local businesses, encourage opportunities for employment here, but balance that with protecting the environment and, again, preserving the rural... So this ordinance, this proposal is very much consistent with that element. And I think most important and most consistent is Element 8, which is dealing with agriculture in town. And the goals of this element are to maintain agriculture as a vital part of a community as a way of life, to maintain open space value, to maintain agricultural economic activity. And it says right in the document that Portsmouth residents want to feel like they live in a rural community in a farm town. It says, "Our farms not only supply highly valued open space and scenic views, they are also an important part of the character of the community, and keeping these farms active is the best guarantee for maintaining the character of the community as well as open space." And this comes directly from your comprehensive plan. It says, "Farms benefit the town financially because their land are less in services than they provide, and because their value boost boosts the value of surrounding properties." So we feel very much that this proposal is consistent with all of those elements of the comprehensive plan. And similarly with the purpose statements in the zoning code, they follow very closely with your comp plan, and so we feel that the ordinance is very consistent with those as well. Now, we have seen just today a letter to the editor that expresses concern that this proposal would eliminate or restrict the preservation of open space here in Portsmouth. And quite to the contrary, we feel that the purpose here of this ordinance is to keep local businesses here, to keep local agriculture going, and to preserve open space and limit additional municipal services required. I believe some of the Van Hoff families here tonight, my understanding is they didn't have farmers coming in looking to buy that property to maintain a strictly farming operation there. My understanding is they had offers for subdivisions and additional residential growth. And, and so you have a very clear policy choice in front of you tonight about, you know, creating a new option to preserve open space here in town. We think this is a good option for the town as a whole, and certainly we're advocating for it for, for my client. I do believe we have quite a bit of support in the town. I understand there are objectors. But even from outside the town, I'm not sure if it's in the file yet. My understanding was Rhode Island DEM, the Agricultural Division was going to be submitting a letter of support for this. Similarly, Chuck Allot from the Quinick Island Land Trust is here in support. And I would just suggest that these are two institutions that have a good sense of the importance of agricultural, agricultural uses and preservation of open space. And so I think their opinions on this are meaningful on those two points. So we think this is a winning proposition for the town, hopefully for my clients down the line. And again, I just reiterate, as I wrap up, that this is just the beginning of the road if this were to pass. Anybody electing to use this use or trying to use this use, if it passes, would have to go through a very thorough process to get the relief they need through the zoning board. So any abutter from any proposed project would have the opportunity to come and be heard with their oppositions to any project in that process. And so I just thought that would be a, a good point to make as I close out, so that nobody thinks anything is being rushed through about a specific project here. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions you have. I certainly will answer anything I can. Matthew Gray is here to elaborate if you have any questions about his vision for the use of this ordinance if it passes. Jim Hoole can talk about the comprehensive plan on our behalf, and I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Galvin.
Yes.
Mr. Kessin.
Thank you very much. I'd like to go back to your 30-second sound, your 30-second sound bite. It was probably less than 20 seconds into your dissertation. You were looking for the town to give all relief, and I'm looking for the words you used?
Well, the, the sale of the property, the property...
No, I wanna know what you said.
Okay.
Without having to go back to the tape.
Sure. What I said was...
All relief from town?
They need whatever municipal and administrative relief.
Municipal.
So contingent on achieving whatever municipal and administrative relief necessary to operate the brewery there.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Not at this point.
Okay. Anyone else on the council have any questions for Mr. Galvin?
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Galvin. Mr. Galvin, I mean, I spent time on the zoning board. I sat through...
I've sat through petitions to try and preserve farming activities within the town. So I do support the concept to preserve farms within the town of Portsmouth. But a couple of questions that I have, and I don't know if you'll be the person to answer this, or maybe our town planner will, will answer this. This would require a special use permit, okay? So if it were to go forward as a special use permit, what's the next step for the zoning board to, to review it? What criteria would they be reviewing this as?
It would be, well, all the criteria in your special use permit ordinance, which I think, actually, in the report, I think, I believe, that the, the Article 7 is the special use ordinance.
Correct.
And, yeah, this, I think, A through J are very specific criteria where, to a project, the applicant has to satisfy the concerns of the adversarial impact in a variety of different ways.
No, understood. I'm thinking more along the lines of when you go to Article 7, there are certain development standards. And one of the things that I, I couldn't figure out, and just, I've been off the board for a little while, so I was trying to think, you know, there's condominium developments, there's commercial developments, and there are, there's design criteria. So there are certain provisions that are in the ordinance that, you know, they protect the town, but they also inform an applicant of what the process is, so they can, they can understand if I'm going through this process, here's my, here's my criteria. I have 50-foot side yard setbacks, I have 35-foot building heights. As this farm brewery, where does that fall from a development standpoint? Like, just for my own benefit, how would the zoning board be reviewing this?
Well, we can, I certainly would defer to the town planner on specifically what he would require. I can tell you, prior to the issuance of the Superior Court decision, we were preparing to pursue the Article 5 path and preparing for the design review board and preparing, beginning the process of preparing surrenderments that will go to that design review board. And the discussion was ongoing at that point about what standards might apply relative to setbacks relative to parking. But that is certainly conversation number one in this task.
Well, I think, just, just from my benefit, because I, I mean, I know Ragged Island is just here tonight, and they might be the first one, but I try to look at this as how it would impact other potential properties within the town. So just understanding what that, what those development standards would be is something that, that I was curious about. The, and the thing that kinda caught my attention was really in the, in the definition that's being proposed, where it, it basically says the brewery facilities and related infrastructure must not consume more land than the agricultural activities. It's kind of a wide-open statement. So how does that compare to, say, lot coverage? You know, what, where does this fall from a development standard? Things that, I mean, if I, if I knew those answers, it would help me? Or Gary, I don't know. Is that something that can still be worked out if this thing is to move forward?
Yes, indeed, it is. The reason why I say that is because of the special use process, the special use permit review process, the, the, first of all, the, the, as Mr. Galvin said, that the standards for special use permit primarily have to do with impacts to the neighbors, and there's these famous A through J. The desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area, it will be compatible with the urban uses, will not create a nuisance safety act that is provided. And the, the petitioner has to make positive statements. He has to convince the zoning board that safety through access and adequate security will be provided because, or the desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area because I'm going to do this. This is all folded into his, his application, his design of what he wants to do. The zoning board, because it's a special use permit application, the zoning board is required in a advisory opinion. The planning board has the responsibility to look at drainage and traffic and buffers and whatever, all of the things that they would normally go through with development plan review and give an advisory opinion to the zoning board to review. And in turn, the design, this has to go to the design review board, who would review that and make an advisory opinion to the planning board, and which is, those are normally incorporated in the planning board's decisions. So architectural features and that sort of thing is... So it really, each of them, special use permit process. I'm a big fan of special use permit process because it's adequately notified, all the abutters are correctly contacted, it's a public hearing, advisors, opposedes, and components of it, all in the same room at the same time, and the zoning board has the ability to hear from all parts to make sure that they make the proper decision.
And with that being said, I guess what I still couldn't figure out is, from the, from the special use permits, we have, we have those design standards, or we have the design criteria. I'm just trying to figure out where does the farm brewery fall, fall under, because it's, it's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of an in-between. So there's a commercial component, there's a, you know, you've got the farming component, you're in an R20 zone now. So what, what applies for setbacks? So, 'cause if I'm an abutter, I'm, you know, if I have a 20-foot side yard setback, but it's a commercial operation, do they now get a 50-foot setback? I'm just trying to figure out what, what provides the applicant direction, but also provides protection to the abutters. I, I just don't understand where that falls under the criteria, and it's not to say we can't overcome it, I just don't know where it falls.
Totally valid point of concern. I think, you know, for purposes of tonight, I'm quite confident with what the vision, I think ultimately that my client would have, that the most restrictive design requirements, whether it be on the residential or manufacturing or industrial or commercial, I think with the scope of the property that they're looking for, that they're looking at, they can achieve that. So if the council was on the line to try to implement that requirement, that's something we could do.
But, but that's not what we're here to decide tonight. That's, that's the zoning and the planning boards prerogative. We're here to decide whether or not making this change to our zoning ordinance across the entire town, not just specifically for a property.
That's right.
Where three years from now, somebody could come to, because you're in the front row, Steve, Mr. De Castro, and say, "I wanna build a brewery on your property." De Castro, the number is on the floor, okay? Build a brewery on my property. Or Quonset View could do that, so.
And it would automatically then be slotted into the special use permit.
Special use permit, yeah.
Or I could ask one too, I'm an R10, which is like an actual special permit for brewery. Doesn't make sense.
If you, if you satisfy all the other conditions that are included... If you satisfy all the other conditions that are included.
Right. I'm being facetious, but responding on what Mr. Aguirre has asked. We're working on a comp plan that dates to 1992, that Mr. Crosby is working feverishly to complete. Wouldn't it make sense if the new comp plan took the opinions of a council, this council or a future council, and the general public to find out whether people of Portland want a brewery on a piece of farmland? It's not in there from 1992. Could it be in there from 2018 or 19? We haven't got to that point. It almost seems like to me, if harkens before the horse here, we're here tonight to try and figure out whether this fits into our zoning to satisfy your client at this point. Now, I would only say to the Van Hoffs as well, but it seems like they have other options, which may be better, not so good, who knows? But this proposal seems like it really should have been presented to us by Mr. Crosby. It's written up by a lawyer, but it's not our own solicitor that has come before us and said, "This is what we think you should do," okay? And it should be, it should be a slam dunk. But there are questions here. The actual, actual paperwork, I just finished one comment here, on page two. We've talked about this amendment becoming necessary after a recent Rhode Island Superior Court decision prevented uses not specifically named in the zoning code from being allowed. At this time, this amendment has been proposed to facilitate the move of a local brewery, Ragged Island, from its current place of business to a site at Principal Ferry Road. We're still fighting that decision. We could wait to that decision. It's not, we're spending money to say that decision was wrong. I mean, we're trying to make an exception to something, and we have these other gray areas that we find as a town, missing the new comp plan, we're also fighting this decision that was made against us. And this is just a way to squeeze it in, you know?
Well, I respectfully suggest that we're not doing anything to try to squeeze anything in, and I will suggest that...
Our original ordinance was much more specific, specifically related to the property question, and we worked at great length with your planner, and this ordinance was the product of much of his input and directing us that this is what the town would be best for the town. So, it was collaborative, but it was very much driven by, well, your town staff felt was appropriate for the town. This is dramatically different from what we initially proposed.
Correct.
And I would just also say, I understand the idea of, let's take our time, let's see what the comp plan, how that plays out. But I am here, I think forcing our issue is time, we don't have all the time in the world. We are dealing with a property that, again, has been out to market for a long time, we're on the contract, but the timeline is lingering on that. I know that is not our concern, but what we have here is a beautiful asset to the community right now, in the form of that nursery. The goal is to try to maintain it as such, and maybe a little bit of a different form. This isn't the best-case scenario of how to try to achieve that, but it's where we are. It's the reality of where we are because of a court ruling. This was not our preferred path. We were hoping to go into the zoning board, meet directly with all the neighbors about specific ramp in the site, and that one was closed off to us. So, every point you made is totally valid, but...
Time is of the essence for you and your client.
Yeah, that's right.
I get it, but you're forcing us to make this decision when the general public, citizens of Portsmouth, haven't even had any input into the comp plan. We have a committee of citizens that are concerned about the comp plan, that are working on it, but ultimately, it will have public comment, and it'll be decided by a council, a future council, of what, how it looks. Another, you know, that plan will probably be in effect for the next 25 years.
And, and again, again...
I get your point, I think you understand mine. Let's just let somebody else speak.
I totally do, and I just believe in this. There's definitely work to be done to achieve a new comp plan, and I respect that. I would say that this leads to...
Sure.
Thank you.
All speakers, please.
Mr. Crosby wanted to respond to that.
Comment, please.
Yes.
There is provisions, regardless of the timing of this application, we have a comprehensive plan which is in effect now, we have zoning board, a zoning ordinance and map which is in effect now. Our decisions are based upon those two regulations, if you will, and there in the zoning ordinance, there is a provision, Article 12 or 13, I'm not sure which one it is, where anyone proposing changes to the zoning ordinance are not necessarily the responsibility of me or the town solicitor. Anyone in the town can come to the town council at any time and propose a change, an amendment to the order, the zoning ordinance. There is a procedure to go through, it's properly advertised, and you guys get to decide. So, it, it, I would say that it is not, the timing of this issue is not important, is not critical, that anybody at any time can come to the town council for any reason and oppose, and propose a zoning ordinance amendment.
I would agree.
Well, I think it didn't seem as though you understood that, so...
No, I just...
The implication was somehow that...
Stagger, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, but Mr. Galvin made a point there that I was just trying to follow up with. When I was talking about the, the design requirements, you indicated that, that the development, in your mind, would be subject to the, to the more restrictive, the more restrictive requirements. So, if, if there was a way to just include that, I mean, that way, you know, they're just trying to give us some protection, that's all.
The public hearing process allows for the, your input and your amendment to this proposal, and this is part of the dialogue that occurs at this hearing. So, we're, we are open, open to that. And, you know, my original go at this was very much focused on that property and contemplated those types of things. But because this is town-wide, I think there was a feeling of not being so specific. So, that...
Yeah, but I like the, it is, and I'm trying to think big picture, town-wide, but I, and each use or each petition could have its own little nuances. So, I'd prefer to have something in there where it, you know, kind of defaults to the more restrictive uses, or, or, or design requirements.
Yeah.
Whether it's lot coverage, building height, setbacks.
And I would defer, right now, on the spot, to Gary as to what that might be to apply in this case. Obviously, what that would mean for any particular project, is that, that would just add up, or add to the type of relief that it may be sought at this level. So, it's, it would be dealt with in the same form, it might just be, or prefer three variances instead of one, or something like that. So, that type of, seeking that type of specific relief doesn't sway me or my client in this process, because the goal, I know their goal, and I think anybody who wants to use this potential ordinance, is it's got to be done the right way, it's got to be done with consideration for the neighbors, the town as a whole. So, if, if there's a clear, most restrictive route that Mr. Crosby has in mind, or that you are aware of, that doesn't, you know, that would be something we would be willing to work with.
No, I appreciate, I, along that same line, I think if we can do it right the first time, it protects everybody, because if you were to proceed down this path, and you, you get approval, but that then gets appealed and overturned because of something that was vague, you're no better off, you've lost a year or more. So, I was just trying to, not that we would get it all right, but something along the lines of where the development would be subject to the more restrictive design requirements.
I would, I would argue that that makes the argument for specific standards being inappropriate. And in this particular case, we have a piece of property which is zoned R-20. So, the setbacks and lot coverage and building height and so forth would all apply to the R-20 zone if we have a farm that's down in the R-40 or the R-60 zone. Those particular requirements would apply there. So, I think the one-size-fits-all for standards for, for a farm brewery might not be appropriate, but that the most restrictive for whatever property there is would be.
So, in other words, I think Mr. Crosby's saying, this is in an R-20.
Yeah.
The one we're ultimately applying for is in an R-20.
Right.
So, those would be the, the standards by which we would be seeking, on application.
And it doesn't mean that the planning board, or the zoning board, or the, the planning board advising the zoning board, the zoning board has the ability to put conditions on the special use permit, so they could say, "You need to have 100-foot buffer around all property lines specific to this particular site." Now, you wouldn't want to do that for, as a, as a matter of standards for all sites, because all sites are, are, are different, if it results.
So, to the sentence of brewery facilities and related infrastructure must not consume more land than the agricultural activities per designated property zoning, so...
No, we put that, we put that in place, or that, that, that language was put in place to try and reflect the idea, the, the relationship between a principal use and an accessory use. That's all we've got, listen.
So, okay, so if it were to proceed, you're subject to, if it's R-20 zoning, everything...
Principal use to be in the farm.
Principal use, R-20 zoning, you're subject to the R-20 development standard?
Yeah. Lot coverage would be 20 percent.
Okay.
Something that makes...
No, that's fine. Okay.
I think we're, we're okay with 20 percent.
All right.
I think the question is, again, it's a...
If that, no, that's, that clears it up, because then it's black and white. You can, you can base your decision and move forward. I, if, I'm going to leave it at that.
Mr. Ryan.
I am actually, the point I was going to make, you've already kind of discussed it, which is, the statute as written here gives the planning board and the zoning board, and the zoning board a real adequate tools that they can actually decide this case by case without being subject to accusations that, you know, they're exceeding their authority, or that they're damaging the economic interests of the potential developer. But in, with the R-20 zoning, though, that can be handled. I guess my other, so, like your comment on that also, it strikes me that this proposed use is actually quite similar to a vineyard, to winery. And what, what criteria are we using if somebody decides to open up a second winery in town? Or is that going to be zoned similar?
That has nothing to do with it. This is a very specific description of a farm brewery.
And yet, they seem very similar operations.
Perhaps, yes.
You grow stuff and ferment it.
We also have provisions, we also have provisions in our ordinance that allow agriculture in all districts, and that includes the packaging and processing and ancillary activities with the horticulture.
Okay, but the R-20 zoning actually does give these various committee, or these boards, the ability to limit the amount, the size of buildings that would go on the slot, and how, and their height and all that.
Right, to a point, yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Mrs. Yucel.
So, there's 37 acres, correct? And 15 are wetlands, and that leaves 22 acres.
But, but again, I would be careful not to, we're talking about the entire town, the dissonance of...
Town, okay. Okay, this is my general question. If it's zoned R-20, there's 20 percent lot coverage allowed. If they apply for a special use permit, can you reduce that 20 percent? Or are we locking ourselves into allowing 20 percent? You'd con...
We would allow 20 percent, they comply certain, they could require dimensional variance.
But not, we could not require less. Okay.
Any further questions from the council, from Mr. Crosby or Mr. Galvin, for now?
Okay. I have one.
Okay.
So, so we just got quoted on this, page four of this proposal that just was handed out tonight, which is the 2002 Comprehensive Plan. Paragraph C at the very bottom of the page, preserve the rural characteristics of Portsmouth in both aesthetics and physical goal. I would like to ask the solicitor for the petitioner, what is the current coverage on the property to date?
Buildings and...
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that question, and the reason I don't is because we came to a screeching halt with everything about the specific property when this case came out. And it became a total focus on whether or not this town wants to have a farm brewery or not. You know, we do have the Van Hoffs, and their attorney is here tonight, I don't know if he has a sense of what the lot coverage is. I don't know right now. I don't believe it comes anywhere close to 20 percent.
I think it's, well, there's, there's only, there's four permanent structures on the property, and then there's multiple...
And again, I'm going back, and I'm going back to, and I'm going back to the comp plan, which is being quoted to us, because the rural, the rural characteristics from the 2002 plan, if I look around at the, at the farms that I see, of the farmers in the audience, the coverage is much, is much less.
Right.
That's the farm we think is in the comp plan. I am the liaison for the, for the comp, the new comp plan. We have not seen element one, which I think is the most important element to see in the new comp plan. We had, the, the comp plan committee hasn't weighed in on any new usage, but this is the first time we're going to add manufacturing to this extent into, into a residential area. It scares me, okay? We had, you know, you look at Louis, you look at a farm on East, on Middle Road, both ends, Mr. De Castro's sitting in front of me, he doesn't have anywhere near that coverage. The rural characteristic that's in this comp plan is a rural characteristic that if I look three, three seats back behind Mr. De Castro, has, has no structure, has no manufacturing. I worked at Fair Home Dairy. It was, Stevie, what was it? A 50 by 100, it was 65 acres, but the, but the processing plant was a 50 by 100-foot room? I mean, that's the rural characteristic that's in this plan being quoted to us. I'm not comfortable with this, with this change, I have to tell you that.
I can pick up on that.
You already got that, right?
Yeah, on the, on the...
I'm also the same age of the petitioner, trying to sell it. I look around here, and Peter looks much better than every, anybody. I mean, there's not as much white hair.
I think that, I think this type of proposal, and I, I get where you're coming from, that what you see as rural...
What I see as rural, and I've, and I've done, I'm not going to say I've done an exhaustive search, I've gone to Georgia, I've gone to another farming community in Westport, and I've gone to our own neighboring town in Middletown. None of the lot coverage in those ordinances that already exist in the comp plan that exist doesn't ask for 20 percent of the property.
Well, again, we are...
The taproom that's currently at Ragged Island is bigger than what's allowed in the Middletown ordinance, at least the draft ordinance, which is the one I pulled from mine.
Well, again, we're open to any restriction you want to contemplate, and I was just told that the lot coverage out on the, the site in question for our potential project is less than one acre on a lot... project is less than one acre on a lot that's 37 acres. Now, there's not gonna be anything close to 20% closed. And I understand that the ordinance here might allow for those types of proposals. So again, we're here to have the dialogue of what the town, where the town wants to go on it. And I would say that the rural component from the '92 comp plan that you're reflecting on, I suspect, may change a little bit in your new one. We're operating under the '92.
Well, it's 2000, it was revised, it was a '92 revised in 2002.
Okay, 2002. We're now 16 years later. I think we can all sense how hard it is for the agricultural use to maintain itself and that there's a new face of farming. And that's what these guys want to do, is maintain it as well as they can while still being financially viable, while still maintaining the community feel and the rural characteristics to the extent possible of Portsmouth. So it's never gonna be like it was.
Well, I get that, but the second bite of that apple is the people that are butting. When I go to the Westport ordinance and I change the use on a piece of property, there are buffer zones, there aren't in our ordinances. It's not even contemplated in what we've seen so far in our current comp plan.
But it will be contemplated in the special use permit process. That's where the flexibility comes.
It's in their zoning ordinances already. What bothers me is we have a lot of people with a lot of homes, and I mean, we can go down to Bill Sales and go there and just across the street. Physically, there's not enough space. I'd say if I make a noise on my property to the extent I can make it, physics doesn't allow it to be at the DB it needs at his property lines. I don't want to get in, I can't vote for an ordinance that doesn't do that. They, the people that pay, and there's a lot of farmers in here, they pay, they're paying good money and pay a lot of the taxes, but we have other residents that we're not protecting. And I don't understand how we can, how we can put a manufacturing in a residential area. It just, I mean, 10 acres isn't any amount of grain. The Middletown ordinance requires that trucks not be over 20,000 pounds in the draft. I'm not saying it ended up there, but trailer trucks running in and out of a piece of property gets, gets old pretty quick. So what I have in front of me is not a big enough picture for me to vote for this.
I would like to add that in our comprehensive plan, it also talks about farmland preservation and the need to preserve prime soils. On this particular site, there is 22 acres of Newport silk loam, prime farmland soil. There is 15 acres...
Mr. Crosby, I get that. All the soils in the soil test magazines are all written from this island. I get that. Okay?
Well, I perhaps, I guess, don't need to complete my thoughts, sorry.
All right.
I would say, yes, I do, would like to complete my thought. What their proposal would do is preserve 17 and a half acres of prime farmland soil by a very specific, highly regulated special use permit process as opposed to having 40 house lots by right on top of prime farmland soil. I will take that bet any day.
You can take that.
And I don't, and I don't mind preserving farm. What I don't see is a complete picture of any kind of ordinances that are gonna be drawn. And at this point, okay, I can't hold this. I can't hold this.
This is a public hearing. The way that public hearings work is if you would like to get up and speak, and I assume there are gonna be a lot of people who would like to speak. So if we could limit our comments to two minutes to begin with, and if we have some time allotted at the end, if you want to come back up and make a point, we can do When you do come up, please state your name and your address for the record, for the clerk. And again, two minutes, and we'll try and get this done as quickly as possible. I am gonna make an allowance for the young lady with the baby because she might want to go home. So you can go first.
Hi, Caitlin Thomas, 9 Bristol Ferry Road.
If you just do me, just pull it down, it'll come down. There you go.
Hi, Caitlin Thomas, 9 Bristol Ferry Road. I'm gonna keep it short. I think this is a great thing to keep, to keep the land open. I live right in front of the farm, and I'd hate to see a whole bunch of big, huge houses go up because down on Strawberry Lane, that's the popular thing going on right now, there are a ton of like 1.2 million dollar homes and they're huge and one's just blocking the next one's view and, you know, that's not really what we want to see as neighbors. And I think a lot of people here would agree with that. I think with the price of the lands, things just have to change, you know, people need to consider. Maybe if some people are opposed and we don't think that this could be agreeable tonight, there could be just a little bit of lingo added in as to the percentile of land or the size of the land so that everyone could come to an agreement that this is probably the best thing for the town.
Thank you very much. All that under two minutes, very good. Mr. Chappell.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Eric Chappell, I'm an attorney in Portsmouth, practicing for 35 years and have had the privilege of representing the Van Hoffs. So I do have a bias built in because I represent them. Also, I'm the mother of a farmer in town who in the 60s used to own the land behind CBS where they maintained a garden shop for years and years on land, which is now part of the Abbey Golf Course, which would be nice to own that land again. I really want to speak generally because this is really only the ability to come back in front of the zoning board for a petition. But I look back, you know, 30 years ago when I was in your chair, we had the same exact conversation with the same people that are in here. And the comprehensive plan that we testified to and helped build back in 1992 does talk about what they're doing here right now. And the top two goals in your comprehensive plan are to preserve farmland. And while they may not call it manufacturing, they use the word processing. And the word processing is taking raw materials and making it into a product that you can sell. Someone else sign his hands, gonna talk later on about agritourism, which is a combination of agriculture and tourism. And we've done that before. Being a farmer is hard, they're gonna tell you how hard it is. We've done things like having, you know, mazes on farms off of Middle Road, and we've allowed weddings to help, you know, anything we can do to help a farmer to have weddings and grow what they do on their property. All we're asking for here is to do what other towns, similarly situated, similarly sized towns in Rhode Island, East Greenwich, Coventry, a few others. And each time I would take one of their ordinances to give it to Mike and Gary, they already had it. So this is not an ordinance designed and drafted by Ragged Island. This is something that they looked at, and they looked at this as what would be beneficial to the town, not what would be beneficial to Ragged. The form for that is later, that's gonna be at a zoning board. As Mr. Aguirre can tell you, that's a long and exhaustive process. And I think some of those details can be worked out. To answer one of the other questions about the pressure, this, not only pressure on this property, but there's pressure on a lot of properties. Just in the last year, you've seen McCory Farm, 16 lots approved. You saw a month ago, coming up at this hearing, you're gonna have the Ferrera Farm coming up to be cut up into lots. You've had East Main Road that's going under contract behind CBS, that's coming in with a housing component. You've got all the lots on the northern end, and you've got Rhode Island nurseries that just came in with 20 lots. And they're the largest landowner, I think, on Aquinic Island. There's so much pressure on this land and to have the ability to go into your comprehensive plan, and I would argue, by the way, it's not Article One, it's Article 10. Article 10 expressly talks about agriculture and it talks about agritourism. And it talks about the three main goals, the three main goals at the end of the comprehensive plan are to do what you can to preserve these farms. Farming is a business, and the business is a little bit different from my business or your business because their business is their land. And that's the most important thing they have. And what we're trying to do is to make it feasible for them to use their land and continue to have it. Despite the fact that the land is depleting in Portsmouth to become businesses and residential subdivisions, it's still the number one reason why people come to Portsmouth, because they want their schools and they want their farms. Here you can have your cake and you can have it eaten too. And all they're asking is let us have a farm there and have an accessory use and have a brewery, keep a business that's in here now, operating here now, to take over a business that's been here for, I'm trying to figure that out today morning, 60 years?
Been longer than that.
70.
But I think, when did you move from Wayside Garden Shop?
1992.
1992?
Yeah.
And before that?
Before that, 49.
So you've got businesses that have generations of farmers here, and all they're asking for is a shot to turn this over, that's their legacy. They could sell this tomorrow. You know, we have, we have had offers come in on this property where people have already gone to an engineer and had surveys done and have already figured out how many lots they want. So it's not even under contract and they're hiring engineers because there's so much pressure on this land. And yet despite that, they want to sell it for substantially less money to someone who's gonna preserve their legacy. And as someone speculated before, no one's knocking at the door to buy this as a farm. We want to do any program we have. You have Steve De Castro here, you know, we have things like conservation easements that Chuck Allen can talk to him, where he's able to preserve a beautiful farm in perpetuity because of a conservation easement. That's also a tool. We're looking for tools to help the farmers out. And I think this would be a good one.
Thank you, sir. A little bit of extra leeway because you're the... Mr. Fitzmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of quick questions.
Again, just for the record... I understand... I know it's 50 Kristen Court, but just for the record...
I already did it once.
But we're in a public hearing now.
50 Kristen Court.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmore.
Thank you. It's my understanding, and I think I've heard it already, but I'd like to clarify, that it's my understanding that the proposed ordinance would allow a brewery on each one of the town's established farms. Is that correct? Or established under the zoning code for the town of Portsmouth is farms?
If they've survived the special use permit process, yes. If it was passed the way it is.
Okay, so this, as I think Mr. Crosby's already told us, I think this defaults to the zoning board to review for special use permit process, correct?
Go to zoning board.
To make a determination. So we're moving to establish manufacturing processes on what is essentially residential property. And so we're gonna...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if we can go...
Is that wrong?
I know, I, I know we're gonna hear the word manufacturing multiple times.
Well, it says that in here.
It does, it says manufactured beer, which is manufactured. So that word could be changed to brewed and bottled, brewed and canned, whatever.
Well...
It could be said processed.
I guess my concern...
But I know your concern, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna address two concerns. One was Mr. Kessins, and one is this manufacturing. Down the street, 150 yards, if you want to use that narrow of a definition, milk is manufactured. And tractor-trailer trucks go in there and pick up that milk on a daily basis, I'm assuming. I, I'm not there. So let's get out from the manufacturing, let's stop trying to paint this as if smoke stacks are gonna go up and we're gonna be polluting the world.
They're only on the police station right now.
Agreed. So it's a processing facility.
Well, I didn't say anything about that. My question, though, is, and it's close to what your point is, is are we going to get involved in a process in which we slowly reinterpret the zoning code to broaden the term manufacturing to cover other things besides breweries?
Such as?
Oh, I don't know. We have a term in the, in the proposed ordinance as an agricultural operation. I have, that's a pretty broad term as far as I can see. It's in the first sentence of paragraph one.
Which agricultural operation to me would be farming activities.
Yeah, but it doesn't define what it is. Is there a definition in the zoning code somewhere?
It defines it elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, yes, and it is defined as state laws.
And what does it mean?
What does it mean?
Oh, my gosh.
Give us a second. We'll come back to that. You have another quick question? I'm gonna have, we'll read that off G in a second, Mr. Fitzmore. Mr. Roberts.
Peter Roberts, 80, Amherst Avenue. Now, I look at it as a company that's manufacturing something. When you bring up Escobar, yes, he has cows, the cows produce the milk and he sells the milk, but he doesn't do anything else with the milk, like mango ice cream or anything else. He has chickens, they lay eggs, he sells the eggs, but he doesn't make breakfasts. So there is a difference to what happens to it after that. But the main thing I want to get across, have you ever been at a brewery? Do you know what it smells like?
Yes.
It stinks. And if people live near it, if you got a five mile an hour wind, everybody is gonna have stink in their house. This is nasty. And then what is done after they do the brewery? Do you know what they do with the stuff that's in there?
Feed it to pigs, actually.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's nasty.
Thank...
And it is, if it's put outside their manufacturing place, it won't protect the soil, it will ruin the soil. Thank you.
Ms. Howard.
Hi, Nancy Howard, 16 Diane Avenue. So I'm gonna start out with a couple of things, but I want to just mention to you, Mr. Hamilton, that you allowed the attorney for Ragged Island...
I can't hear you.
You allowed the attorney for Ragged Island to speak for more than 30 minutes.
Because he has put forth the zoning ordinance itself.
Again, it's a planning issue with the town, not a hired attorney. That's my opinion.
It has been...
Okay, we're good.
But it has been stated more than once that anybody and their uncle who lives in the town or wants to put forth a zoning change can do that.
Sure.
It does not have to come through the planning process.
Okay.
Okay? So he came in on behalf of a resident to make a change. So that's why he spoke to it.
And spoke for 30 minutes and now...
Correct, because he brought forth...
Quiet, please.
He brought, please, please direct your questions to me. He brought forth the change.
I'd appreciate if you would direct the audience to refrain from harassing.
Make your point.
Okay. I have two issues about this process. So if you don't mind asking those out to the person. Prior to the town council meeting on August 27th, I sent an email to all town council members asking for them to oppose this zoning change and move it forward to a public hearing and a planning board advisory opinion. Mrs. Yuzafuji inadvertently sent me a message intended for another person named Nancy. Mrs. Yuzafuji's email showed that she was working with another person who was supporting this farm brewery zoning change and felt that she had the required votes to move this forward.
That's absolutely not true.
You can read the, you can read it for yourself.
Absolutely not true. I know what my emails are, Ms. Howard.
Mrs. Yuzafuji...
And I don't appreciate being...
Excuse me.
It's Uji Fusa, thank you, but in any case...
Her email implied that the other person is interested in approval of this zoning amendment because she stands to gain from the amendment.
That is absolutely false.
Furthermore, the email indicated that she's protecting the votes at the meeting. That seems inappropriate. I also, Common Fence Point Building sign at the entrance of Island Park is for rent. I engaged the manager and asked her if I could put a message there. She said yes, she was extremely helpful, but made it very clear that it could not be political in any way. So her and I worked together and she posted an excellent message just informing the public. As you can see by the attached letter, she told me that she had to take it down because it was due to the controversy over your message, I've been instructed to take it down. That message was in no way political, it was clearly someone influenced, did not want the public to be informed. So that's, that's about process. So I understand...
That's the process with a private organization and not the town?
Again...
The Common Fence Point Improvement Association does not...
Again, I'm just letting you know that there's forces out there that seem to be not wanting to publish this information.
Okay.
So I understand the Van Hoffs need to sell this property, and I totally understand that, then I agree with them 100%. I'm not opposed to Ragged Island, I hope he thrives. I want him to do, as well as Newport Vineyards, I mean Newport Storm, who makes... I want him to do, as well as Newport Vineyards, I mean Newport Storm, who makes a variety of beers. They sell vodka, they sell rum, they sell moonshine. So they manufacture all of that onsite. And I hope that Ragged Island does that in the appropriately zoned area. I'm opposed to putting a brewery on foreign property. I want to preserve open space. So I want to mention a couple of things about the zoning process.
I won't allow her to finish.
The special use permit requires the petitioner to notice the abutters within two hundred feet.
Correct.
If the, if the petitioner doesn't do that, that's, that doesn't change it, so they don't know. And that's happened recently here. Abutters have not been notified. Number two, the zoning and boarding, planning board that are making these decisions are volunteers. We elected you. We elected you to protect our quality of life. This change allows for manufacturing on almost fifty percent of the property. Seems excessive.
No, this change allows for manufacturing on twenty percent of the property.
I believe it says they can manufacture on no more than what their, what their...
Per the special use permit process, it refers back to where it is placed. So the zoning is twenty percent. We discussed that earlier tonight.
Okay. During the zoning board meeting, while the residents certainly have an opportunity to speak, if you don't hire a lawyer, they don't listen.
I would disagree.
I was at a zoning board meeting, and there was a lot of professionals, a lot of hired help, and there was eighteen letters from residents, and the board voted seven to zero to approve this special use permit. So onto the, onto our comprehensive plan. On page sixty-three, and I apologize, but I didn't capture it all, but page sixty-three on the top says, "Open space. The most efficient way to preserve open space is to prefer farms." Not manufacturing. Building is manufacturing. On the same page, the objective is to preserve and promote open space for the character of the town. Objective four, which is an active objective, is to protect scenic views. If I, if you've been over to Van Hoff, it's a beautiful view of the Narragansett Bay. And number five, the objective in our comprehensive plan, maximize the amount of open space. We're not doing that. One more comment on page one sixty-nine, item E, "Open space shall be provided to appropriate places and efforts." We should be making a better effort. Again, I'm not against Van Hoff or Ragged Island. I want to promote open space. That property should be conserved. I would love for, I would love for Matt Gray to grow all over his property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Yes?
My name is Lisa McDermott. I live at twenty Cypress Street.
Thank you.
I just want to make one note about what the gentleman said about the smell. I live within five miles of the current location of Ragged Brewery, Ragged Island. Never noticed the smell. I've never heard anyone else talking about the smell. It's never been an issue. I also want to address just what she said about the view. I would imagine that if they're putting in a brewery that's gonna have an outdoor seating area, that's gonna be a gathering place for people, they would be insane to put up anything that obstructs that beautiful view. It's a huge aspect of the property. I imagine it's part of the reason they're attracted to it. So I just want to say, I wouldn't be here to support just any brewery in Portsmouth, but I went to school with Matt. I went to school with, as I know her, Katie Meadows. To me, as a resident of Portsmouth, I'm forty, I'm gonna live in this town for the rest of my life, these are exactly the kinds of businesses that I want to support. Businesses that are vocally owned by people who grew up on this island, by people who bleed for this island, by people who respect every special aspect of Aquinic Island. And that's Matt and Katie Meadows. I, I know them. I love Ragged Island. It's a great place for, you know, parents like me to gather. That's not a bar. It's quiet, it's peaceful, their beer is excellent. You just couldn't ask for better neighbors than Matt and Katie. They are gonna respect the property, they're gonna respect the aesthetic of Portsmouth, and I just think it's gonna be a tremendous asset to our community. And I actually think Ragged Island's gonna grow into a brand that we're all very proud to say is from Portsmouth, Rhode Island. I think we're gonna be places all over America saying, "That's the beer from our town. That's Ragged Island beer, and that's where we live." So I, I support them. I think they're an asset, and I hope they grow, and I hope they're welcomed with open arms.
Thank you.
Chris Massid, two hundred Schoolhouse Lane. I just want to say, I grew up in this town. I've been here for thirty-six years. Grew up on Middle Road, right down the road. De Castros, Escobar, Van Hoffs, those are all names that I grew up hearing. I've laid on potato field, I don't know if I even owned it. I'm sorry, I might have taken a couple of potato fields. But just to go through a list real quick, Lilac Lane, Madison Way, Randolph Way, Graylock, Stone Gate, are all roads, all developments that have taken place of farms that used to be on Middle Road in the last thirty-six years. And no offense, but I look like I might be one of the youngest people in this hood. And if I can see that, I'm sorry, I don't want to offend anyone. But if I can see that, being thirty-six years old, I can only imagine what it's been for people who've been around longer than me. Currently, I live in the house that my uncle owned. He owned the farmhouse on the corner of Schoolhouse and Middle, and owned all of Schoolhouse Lane. I grew up six forty Middle Road, playing in the nursery that was back there, that's now Randolph Way. To Mr. Fitzmore, wherever you are, you said that every farmer in here could put a brewery on their land. Every farmer in here could sell their land and put forty more houses up. I used to have an ocean view at six forty Middle Road. I don't. I don't blame my neighbors, but I used to have an ocean view. You know, you talk about the smell of a brewery. I've been in there, when they're brewing. It doesn't smell. Lot of, let's see, what else? I'm just trying to remember what are some of the other comments you made against this because...
If you could do me, just, I want, just direct your comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is my first time.
That's all right. You're doing fine.
So I would just like to say that frankly, the idea of preserving open space by not allowing this permit to go through because they might put a brewery on property would be ridiculous because we don't do that. Like they've said, the Van Hoff have offers. Forty houses are gonna go up. There goes that view that you want to save. So another woman made a comment about how Newport Storm does all this manufacturing of spirits and beer, but have you seen the size of their building? Does that take up twenty percent of thirty-seven acres? No, it doesn't. So in the end, I just want to say I support this, whether it be for a specific cause or in general. I think that you have a policy in place, the recommended policy, it sounds like would make sure that the buildings that are built will look better than the police station. So...
That's your fault.
And it's clearly in there.
It wasn't on the, you know, the rendering.
It wasn't on the rendering, but this policy makes sure that, whether it's on the renderings or not, that it has to be in accordance with our...
I understood.
...of New England town. So yeah, I one hundred percent support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Joanna Dutz, and I live at two oh three Brown O' Lane, and I'm an abutter to the property. And I'm kind of a quiet, shy person, so this is my first time speaking at a public hearing, so I feel very passionately about this, and I wholeheartedly support the farm brewery. I think that this is a beautiful property. I just moved here a year ago, and shortly after I moved, I learned that the property was for sale, and I was so concerned that it was gonna become another charmless subdivision with, you know, forty houses on the lot. And so when I learned that Ragged Island was interested in purchasing this property, I was just so excited. And I think this is a unique opportunity for the town of Portsmouth. Ragged and operations like this, farm breweries represent the future of farming and just a way for, for farmers to, to add value to agricultural products and actually make money. So just wanted to speak and support, and I, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You did just fine.
Great.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Ray Rubber, twenty-five Robin Road. Right up front, so you remember it, this is a third rail issue, and I would ask the council to seriously consider moving a decision on this until after the election. I can see both sides of the issue. I have friends in the audience who, if a business was opened up next to my yard, I would not be happy. If it was a auto repair shop, I would not be happy. If it was a brew gardens with a brewery, I'd be very happy. But I also was on the EDC for several years and actually managed to chair it for two years, and have seen a lot of numbers and a lot of information. Mr. Galvin, Mr. Gavin, sorry, is the comp plan a legally binding document? I don't think so. It is a guide. I don't think it's a legal document. But in my experience, the comp plan lags real life by about twenty years, maybe more. Please be careful with the comp plan. I tried to use it when I was chair in twenty-fourteen, and it was woefully inadequate and way behind the times. I don't think that Ragged Island's motive is to put in a mega business where there's monster problems with traffic and trucks and whatnot. On the other hand, if I lived in that neighborhood, I would be concerned about that. What I ask the council to do is, is to charge your economic development committee with working with Gary Crosby, is to flesh out a future vision of this town, to do with, come up with a comprehensive, decent plan that formulates a vision for this town going forward. And the reason I say that is, in the time that I've been in this town since ninety-seven when I moved here, you do some simple math, you take your property tax bills, my property taxes have increased by two point two percent annually. The town budget is sixty million dollars right now. At two percent, that's one point two million dollars annual increase that you guys just have to find somewhere. Raytheon pays six hundred thousand a year. That was before they divested to the museum. You have to bring in two Raytheons every year just to deal with the increase. If you keep saying no to businesses, pretty soon, all the businesses in this town are gonna die. If you go back to all the folks that were on the PDC several years ago, and you look at the cost of community services, ten percent of this town's income comes from corporates or businesses. If that number declines, and if you take it to the extreme, then a hundred percent of the residences will bear the burden of tax increases. That you don't want to do. All right, I've exceeded my two minutes. I urge you to postpone this until after the election to save your steam. I urge you to take a long look at economic development and revenue growth and charge the EDC to come back to you outside of the comp plan with some real ideas on how to raise revenue. And my hidden agenda, honestly, I'd love a place like a beer garden. If you've ever been to Iscondido and Stone IPA, where they make it in California, they have a lovely beer garden. That was a cheap shot. But, but I can understand Nancy Howard and Janie Smith and a bunch of others that are against it. Absolutely, they're right. Not a right fraud, either or. But take your time, make the right decision, look long term. Thank you very much.
Sir?
Yes, sir. Evening. Juan Carlos Payero, it's P-A-Y-E-R-O, so everyone messes up the last name anyway, fifty-two Lee Avenue. One, don't hold off just because I expect my elected officials to actually make decisions. And secondly, I think maybe is, out of the room, I'm officially the youngest person here at thirty. But just to, you have some numbers. A hundred, it's one thousand four hundred and eighty full-time jobs, seventy point five million dollars in labor income, an average wage of forty-eight thousand dollars, and a hundred and ninety-six million dollars in economic impact to the state of Rhode Island is what breweries brought in last year alone. I understand that we want to preserve what our town is. It's the reason why I moved to this with my two children and my wife, but coming from a place that also did this, this is how we revitalized actual farm. You change or die, and that's in every business. And if we don't do that now, a business like Ragged Island, they're not called Aquinic Island, they're called Ragged Island, they'll leave to a place that will actually welcome them and want to do business with them and make the changes necessary to think in the future. So I would strongly recommend that the council does vote in favor of the proposed changes, and I wish Ragged Island a ton of success. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, councilors. Daniella Abbott, fifty-two Ladera Avenue. I did not grow up in Aquinic Island. I moved here with my husband, and we've had two little kids since, and we live just off of Middle Road. And one of the reasons we live here is because of the beautiful views and the farms that we get to enjoy as we drive around and my kids play outside. I happen to also sit on the EDC, and I'm not speaking for the committee, I'm speaking for myself, but I think when an economic opportunity like Matt and Katie are proposing to our town walks into our town hall, we have to welcome them with open arms and be thankful because it's a blessing. It's a blessing because it perfectly combines economic activity with the desired aesthetic of our agricultural heritage. And for us to not do what we can or what you can to welcome them and make their vision possible would be detrimental to the future of this town, I believe. I think, you know, the Van Hoffs, I love Island Garden Shop, and I will miss it dearly, but they've had it for sale for two years. Unless you want to buy it and farm it, then you have to give them options that go beyond turning it into a residential subdivision. I think what Matt and Katie are proposing is a blessing, and we need to approve it and welcome it, and I urge you to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Allot?
Chuck Allot. I'm the executive director of the Aquinic Land Trust. I live at eleven Whitwell Avenue in Newport. Breweries are, in fact, in my opinion, the new face of farming, and the farm-to-table movement, agritourism, those are the things that we're gonna have to be looking at as a definition of farming in the future, or our comprehensive plan and our zoning ordinance will be irrelevant because we will lose the farms if we think that it's going to be some pastoral use of bygone eras. We need to have farms that are active and up with the times. And quite frankly, whether you use the word manufacturing or processing, those have always been a part of farming. There is nothing different, except in this case, the landowner who wants to do a brewery has to go through a special use permit application and show that there are no noxious parts of that, that use. Other farms don't have to do that as a part of their manufacturing. So we are putting an added burden on this landowner to show that there is no noxious use, that it isn't compatible with the surrounding area and the comprehensive plan. So I think that if the town doesn't look at farming in those terms, farming's gonna pass us by. I look at the mega gas stations and the dollar stores that are popping up everywhere in Portsmouth, and as Daniella just said, we need to look at this type of economic development that's knocking on our door and say, "Yes, this is important to the town of Portsmouth to support this type of use." We want to be a community that supports farm-to-table movement and not the mega gas station and dollar store movement. And that's all we're growing in Portsmouth right now. So I would ask you to support this ordinance with the full knowledge that this landowner has to go before a special use permit, and I put a lot of weight, I sat on the zoning board in this town, I sit on the zoning board in Newport, I believe that those boards do a fabulous job putting the appropriate conditions on a use to make sure that it, it doesn't have an adverse impact. And I think with that in place, that this council should feel very... And I think with that in place, that this council should feel very comfortable putting this ordinance through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak for or against the change in this ordinance? Smith.
Janie Smith, 39 Morgan Street. I've lived here for about 15 years, built a house here. I don't have much to say, except, farmers are not manufacturing. I lived on a farm for a good long time, and they are not manufacturers. This is not my version of the farmers at all. And all I can say is, manufacturing has its place, they should be in the industrial park, they should not be on commercial property. And there are other taxpayers besides this cheer club tonight that do not agree with this as well. So, voting yes tonight might, well, might harm you in the election, just to let you know. There are other people out there. You can laugh all you want, but there are other people out there who are against this. So, I had my little piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sir. Mr. DeCastro. Were you speaking up there, or is that because you've been up all day?
I did, I started at 2:00 today. AM, yeah. My Steve DeCastro, 991 Middle Road. I'm a dinosaur. And there aren't many of us left. I get too passionate with agriculture. It's not something you learn to do, it's already born in you. Van Hoffs took their father's farm, ran it as long as I can. Most of them work worse than I do now. It's time for them to retire. They could sell their farm and fill it full of houses, or they could do what they're trying to do right now. And Paulie, I mean, Mr. Keston, I'm kind of surprised at you that you don't agree with this.
I don't agree with the vision, and I, and I will state where I was. I don't agree with it as big as the vision was asking. I, I see quaint little towns, there's a, there's a, there's a farm on West Man Road that was 26 acres, okay? It didn't have 50% or even 20% of the acreage coverage. I understand you're confused with my position. I'm looking at the whole town. There are other options. I don't think preservation through ALT is a good answer all the time. The Simmons Farm across the street was preserved, it's in worse shape than it, than it, you know?
There's, there's a lot of farms that I can drive around this town, and I can say, when I was a kid, I used to farm that land, I used to farm that farm, I used to plant that.
I used to walk, I used to walk all this property and hunt it in the 60s.
You know better than--
I know how many have dried up. I know the one at, I know the one at the end of Schoolhouse Lane. But that's not for me to solve, that's for you to solve. And I'm, and I'm not convinced in my heart, Steve, that 50% manufacturing of the acreage that, that was being asked is--
That's not what the ordinance says.
40%.
Now that there's a special, now that there's a special use permit, I get it. But, I don't support that. I mean, we, we spent, because Mr. Allen just stood up in front of us, all right? I talked to Mr. Allen as we bought the Spruce Acre property, okay? The town of Portsmouth kicked in $300,000, and everybody's kicking in money to, to preserve property. I understand the town of Portsmouth kicks in $775,000 to the farmers, because they've reduced your taxes in, in, in what you are not being charged because of the rate. I get all of that. It didn't help. Will 100% of the taxes help, Steve, if we dropped it off? If we dropped all the taxes and it went all the way to a million, and you paid nothing on your farms, what's going to turn it around? I sit in your ag committee meeting, I sat in it the other day, okay? I don't know what the solution is, I'm not in it, I don't have your shoes on. I have a vision when I worked at Highland Farms, I had a vision when I worked at where your cousins are and finally had to move to New York. Keston Farm that we owned down the street, I get all of that. Okay? I get the economic pressures. Is it the economic pressure, or is it, or is it needing to cash out? I don't know what the answer is. I know, I know for our, I know for our family, it was a financial gain. It was better to, it was better to build houses than they stayed in business. It's Keston Farms. My uncle's name's on the, on the granite block. The farmers have to solve this. They have to be the ones to morph. And I get this manufacturing thing is, is, is one of, one of the tools you want to use. I'm not convinced what's in front of me is going to play out right. And I have my opinion, and you, and you can, and you'll vote against me in the election, okay? I'm okay with that. But, but what I, what I don't understand is, we're supporting farms at $770,000, okay? We, we give Spruce Acres and ALT $300,000, which then let Middletown kick in $300,000, and it turned into a rental property. It was immediately supposed to be open for all the people in Portsmouth, to be able to use the trails and, and plant things. I see it's moving forward, because there's dirt being moved around through the, through the pillars that were originally on the Spruce Acre property. There's a lot of people, and yourself could be one of them, because of the economic pressures, that are living on the margins. It's not just the farmers.
My farm--
$1.2 million a year, you heard Mr. Brabec. That's not an easy, that's not an easy number to raise. We started reviewing this comp plan in 2016, go back to the documents. We don't have the most important element done, land use. I sit in the ag committee, I watch you guys. I, I understand what you're doing. I don't know if it's enough to save the farms.
That the rate they're going, the only ones that will be left are the ones, like the one I was fortunate enough to own, with the development rights sold.
Correct, but I don't think that, but I don't think financially, that's a good thing for farms.
It depends. If you want a farm, it is, because I could not afford to buy a farm--
But I, but I don't--
If it hadn't had--
Like my family, you run out of people that want to do it.
That's what's happening everywhere.
So, so we, so we do, so we do, so we're having a real honest conversation, right? So we allow manufacturing, right? Does that stop the preservation that we're doing? I don't know that impact.
The farm won't be filled with houses, there will be some agricultural stuff happening there, and that's a, that's a way better trade-off than having more police, more schools, more everything else.
If you, if you look at the growth, if you look at the growth in the schools and the houses we're building, they're not going to our public schools. Right? It's been flat, Steve. It's been flat. I understand, I understand the community wants to morph to this. I don't understand the impacts later on. And I'm cautious over it. And today, with what's in front of me, I got to tell you, it's still a no. If I looked at the ordinances for, for Middletown, 10,000 square, oh, yeah, 10,000 square foot, I think, is the, is the barn sizes, that's the limit. None of that exists currently in our laws in Portsmouth, to help protect the residents that pay 90, what's the number, 92, 93% of the taxes? You can drive, you can drive the other side paying the taxes out of here. It's a give and take. I don't know the answer, it's coming forward tonight. I'm not comfortable with what I have. I've, I've looked at Westport, like I said, when they go from commercial to, to residential, there's a 100-foot buffer. A 100-foot buffer seems to be a lot. We don't have that kind of space on this island. When they go from farming to, not farming, when they go from manufacturing to another residential classification, there's a 100-foot buffer. We don't have that space. We both know that.
Well, I think you guys are going to miss a good opportunity to reserve another piece of land. It's not a really huge piece, but it is something that was there, and it's been agricultural forever.
I've been here as long as--
Oh, yeah.
I've been here as long as--
Probably a couple of years more, Paulie.
I could dye my hair and look as good as you. But, you know, again, I don't, I don't know the answer. I don't know if this is the solution.
I don't know.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and that's why, at this point, tonight, this zoning hearing, it's still a no, Steve. I haven't heard anything that changes my mind. Because we've got to live here as a community, residential and all. Okay? I live across from a dollar store. It's a lot of fun. Okay? I lived here when we put a turbine up, and everybody thought that was a good idea. I'll tell you what, when you live at the bottom of it, Steve, not so good.
You don't get shade off and on and off and on?
Oh, I get that. Yep. Got to write now, it's October, lasts about an hour. Every night, every night at dinner. But that was a good idea to put that up. What I'm trying to tell you is, and I understand, there's a lot of farmers here, but when you start driving down the value of houses, who's paying most of the bill? And I'm not saying, I, I can't really see the picture. I haven't seen the business plan. I didn't go to the openings, I didn't go to, to the news breakouts to the residents.
I didn't see any opposition from the neighbors.
I've got them on my email. There's a pretty, there's a pretty good room full of people. You know, and the one, and the people that, the people that stand up almost get booed, Steve. It's a reality that there are people that oppose it, and they're not comfortable to sit in the room. I'm sitting here opposing it in front of a, a room full of people.
Yeah.
But I don't, no, but I don't know that this, as it's proposed, and what I understand of the business plan, I'm not comfortable. You know, there, there are still--
I think your two minutes are up.
Yep, I'm good, Paul, thank you.
That was good, Steve, I liked that.
My name is Steven Manuel Anderson, 240, 242 Headley Street. Ooh. Try not to get as fired up as Stevie. I am a third-generation potato farmer. Now, if you were to tell me that I couldn't make vodka out of my potatoes on my farm, Mr. Keston, I would tell you, you were nuts.
No, I know you can.
All right? What Ragged Island wants to do, I think, is wonderful. They're trying something new. In the early 2000s, late 90s, there was this thing going around called the Atkins Diet. We as potato farmers couldn't give potatoes away.
That's true.
So, down here, my family farm, Maplewood Farm, I put, started putting up greenhouses. Found out we could grow some sunflowers. It's, you have to diversify in order to survive as a farm, no matter what. They're not making farmers anymore. This ordinance, or, or the change happened in what, 2002? How many acres has this town lost since 2002?
100.
Okay? We have to embrace change. We have to accept it. It's going to happen. It's the new way of farming. I, I really wish you would reconsider your vote and, and support these guys. They're not making farmers. I'm, I got to sit down. So I really wish you would reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Dave McLaughlin. I live at 3 Haskell Avenue, Newport, Rhode Island. Just want to address a couple of points. I think a lot of great points were made. I want to talk about the impact of what this would do. If you think about other breweries, some of them that were mentioned tonight, and you think about the shape of their roof, the collection of stormwater runoff is something that's going to be done, probably the most efficiently out of any new building that's going to be put up in Portsmouth. And if you think about how the stormwater that runs off of the road could be collected as well, what you're really talking about is leadership for the environment, as well as trying to protect the seas, because all that water runs to the bay. So, you're really going to see some good improvements on stormwater runoff. When you talk about air quality, there's certainly a lot of carbon dioxide. When you talk about farming, it's carbon sequestration. And what you have right here is someone who wants to get into farming. I've heard a lot of sad remarks that farming's dying, but you're talking about someone who wants to bring it to, and be alive. The byproduct of a brewery certainly can be used in many ways. If you think about foam to farm, material can be used to feed, it can be used in composting. I talked about the seas, but what we're really talking about here is local self-reliance. I mean, healthy soils, healthy seas, and healthy people. This is a community effort, and I think there's a lot of good reasons that the impact would be positive for Portsmouth, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So anybody else who would like to come up and make a statement? Ted?
Good evening. My name is Peter Pease. The last name is spelled P-I-E-T-Z of 85 Glen Road. I often speak for my wife, Hillary Chin, now Pease, of 85 Glen Road. I feel like this is a proposed zoning ordinance whose time is overdue. It's a fantastic idea, I really applaud Ragged Island Brewing Company for being a trailblazer in this regard. It's always hard is to be the first one to do something, and it's a tremendous effort. This is a great way to maintain a contiguous tract of land in a beautiful area of Portsmouth. We maintain beautiful vistas in Portsmouth. As taxpayers, I'm more than happy to support farms, because I love those vistas. It very relaxes me on my drive to work, which I can all use, we all can use that. Let's keep Portsmouth beautiful, maintain the agricultural character of Portsmouth, and this is something that we all applaud.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Don't be shy, because I'm going to ask three times, and at the end of the third time, public discussion will be done. Mr. Galvin?
If you could do it from the microphone, that way-- We did go through the planning board, and they did recommend this unanimously, that it, that it be moved forward. I know you guys make the decision tonight, but I just wanted to remind the board that they also took a look at this, embedded it, and they approved it unanimously.
Thank you. That is in the backup. So again, once the hearing is closed, all public comment will stop, so, anybody else who wants to get up and make a comment, please do so at this time. I'm happy to say that you all did it in exactly the amount of time that I thought it was going to take, about an hour. So I appreciate that, even though I was a little lenient on the two minutes. So this will be the second time. Anybody else want to come up and speak? One last time. Seeing and hearing none? Seeing and hearing none, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. This is the time for the council to deliberate, um, and discuss the changes to Chapter 405, Article 2 of the zoning ordinance. Uh, Mr. Crosby, and/or Mr. Gavin, um, written, written in the ordinance, for my use, or for my thought process, it says that special use permit will be needed for special events on the property, but it doesn't spell out that you have to go through the special use process, even though I know we have our issue with the special use process. How do we?
It, it's just, it's a separate section of the ordinance, agriculture special events. All it does is note that this doesn't give you a right to do the special event. It's a separate application.
Understood. How do we ensure that the farm, any farm, goes through the special use permit to get the approvals to go, to get through the zoning process? It's not spelled out in this change of the ordinance.
Well, they would have to, to get a permit, they'd have to go through the process. They, they, if you, they started an operation without getting a special use permit, it would be a zoning violation.
You're talking about just the special events?
Nope. Not just the special events, just the entire. If, if Steve decided that he doesn't wanna break his back anymore, and he wants to build a brewery because he likes to drink beer, and he came forth, what ensures that his neighbors off of Middle Road are gonna be able to have their say? That's in this zoning ordinance someplace else.
It would be a zoning violation and go to court and get a injunction.
Yeah. He'd still have to go through the, the Farm Brewery Act to, as a special use.
Yeah. But the, what I'm saying is, the Farm Brewery Act doesn't say.
It doesn't have, any use that's only allowed conditionally by special use permit has to get a special use permit before you can make use, that use of the land.
Just making sure it's in there.
It is.
Okay. As I read the change, I know what, that the big word it's there is, is manufacturing, and I know that the process through some heads are that, like I said earlier, they're gonna be smoke stacks and we're gonna start, Henry Ford's gonna move into town and start mass-producing cars. Right now, allowable on this land without a special use permit, speaking of smell, could be a pig farm. And whoever, everybody who's raised pigs before, they stink. I am comfortable with the fact that this is, this is a process that, we're not saying that tomorrow there's gonna be a brewery on this piece of land, or any piece of land in town. There still is a long process to go through. The neighbors will be notified. They are notified. Despite what has been testified earlier, people do get notification. Some choose to read it, some choose not to read it. I do that with a lot of mail in my house, too. So, I personally, I am in favor of this change to try and help maintain our agricultural heritage here in town. Anyways, Mr. Ryan?
I'm in favor of this as well. The, um, idea that small New England farms are going to be able to compete against the agribusinesses of the California Central Valley and Midwest is ludicrous. Uh, they, the amount of work that these guys do locally is obscene. Uh, you know, we supposedly fought a war against slavery, but it's, it may be self-imposed, but that's what it is. So, um, I think, you know, Mr. Keston doesn't see a solution to this problem. I don't know if this is the solution, but if no solutions are tried, none will be found. So, I think that this ordinance is a limited thing. It still subjects anybody who wants to go down this avenue, uh, to the judgment of our standing committees. Uh, it'll be an open and public process, and I think that this is a very small, but I think potentially very important change to make i- in our zoning ordinance, and I'm, I'm completely in favor of it.
Ms. Ojafuza?
Uh, I have, both grandparents on both sides were farmers. Um, I believe that so many of you have made so many great points about why this is a good, um, option. I understand there are problems, but nothing is going to be perfect. What we have to do on the town council is look at options, look at the pros and cons, and take whatever option is available that has the highest upside. And I know that some people might object, but when you're not offering any other solutions, I don't think that's a useful way to go. I was elected, um, to take criticism. Uh, I would think I was elected to lead, and mainly, I hope, I was elected to do what I think is right. So, I am also in favor of this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stated, I think, when I first started, that I, I was in, in favor of options that help support our farmers. Uh, my concern going into this was how would this thing be reviewed? Um, that, that's what I wasn't clear on. They were pretty straightforward. It falls under the R-20, so all the setbacks and things like that, goes through special use permit, it does fall under the, the R-20 standards. And, you know, and this, the process through the planning and zoning could further restrict or impose conditions that would further protect, um, a butters if this thing were to be approved. You asked about what the definition of agriculture was earlier on. I mean, agriculture is a commercial enterprise, uh, which has its primary purpose of farming, cultivation of crops, and it goes on. It's a, it is a commercial entity. Uh, I've been down the road with, when I was on the zoning board, different options, corn mazes. I believe I sat on a petition for Van Hoff that allowed, you know, we split hairs over definitions of what, uh, I think it was horticulture was at the time or something, to allow mulching on their property because they were looking to supplement the, the farm. Um, I think this is probably the next avenue for trying to support our farmers. And the important thing, though, is that we also have processes through the planning and zoning that also protect our, our residents. So, you know, I am comfortable with the proposed amendment. I would be supporting it, and, you know, I, I think we have to do something to try to, to preserve the, the, the quality of life that we have in Portsmouth, and these farms are part of that quality. So, that's my two cents.
Mr. Keston?
Mr. President, I'm not well-versed in, in zoning ordinances. This, this topic is definitely out of my league. And from that point on, I, I stand on the position that I have. Um, I've, I've heard a lot. It hasn't changed my position. It hasn't enlightened me anymore. It is what it is.
Ms. Gleason?
Thank you. I would suspect there's probably enough votes here to pass this tonight, but I still have questions. I think, I think in a perfect world, Chuck Allen would've stood up there and said, you know, I think the ALT should purchase this land. I don't know why that hasn't happened, okay? That would be a great place for a community garden. Citizens could buy a plot there. It's aggressive, it's, we've heard it's the best, uh, soil around. But instead, we're gonna, we're talking about putting a brewery down there and growing hops and maybe some type of fruit to add to beer. I've never been to Ragged Brewery. Uh, I have no idea how big a space it's in. I know it's in our industrial park. I can't believe that our industrial park is full and there's not room for expansion, if that's what somebody really wants to do. Because in my mind, making a beer should take place in industrial, in an industrial facility, okay? You can shake your head all you want, I'm just, I'm looking at it this way. I think that land would be best served if you grew your crops there, whatever. I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna be growing barley or wheat, but I might be wrong. I, all I've heard is the hops, which apparently flavors the beer, and then you might wanna flavor it with apples. I, I don't know what, what they're looking at down there, but it seems like it's not really gonna be used for the ultimate farm. It's for a tax break as a farmer, as I see it, to move a facility out of an industrial park and build it on farmland, okay? Maybe that's okay to do, but what happens to the next farmer that wants to do that in a residential neighborhood? We can't predict that. Um, you could say that the special uses are gonna protect things, but I would say, when somebody here said, if you're gonna represent yourself as a residential person at one of these planning board meetings or zoning board meetings, that you have to hire a lawyer, sadly, I think that's true in this town, because the people that, that are trying to push these things through, you know, if you will, um, are represented by lawyers. And you have no, you have no chance oftentimes, as just a residential Joe off the street, to, um, influence people on a, on planning boards that are volunteers like I am, all right? I'm not an expert on zoning, but I'm here to try and make decisions. I didn't hear anything that compelled me to say, this is really the right thing to do for Portsmouth. I think we need farms. Don't get me wrong. But I think what should be grown on that land is crops. I don't think a brewery should grow up from, uh, that New England fine soil that we have So, I just don't, um, I'm, I'm gonna be a minority here, I'm sure. Okay? So, this is an election year. I could say yes. I could say yes. But in my heart, I don't believe it's the right thing to do, okay? Again, maybe Chuck knows more than I do. I mean, we're always looking for projects for open space. We're calling it open space, but is it really open space after you build a brewery in the middle of it? Yeah, it's, it's got, there's no houses on it, but is, is it truly open space? See if I have any more notes here. Again, the bottom line to me is, it's a farm, it should be cropped, grown on the farm. The manufacturing should be offsite in an industrial park or similar facility. I think the tasting place should be there, if you're gonna have, uh, beer tastings or whatever. That's fine, there's buildings there for that already, but I just don't think that a brewery, an operation to manufacture, process, whatever you wanna call it, uh, should take place on a farm. Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right. So, we've heard a lot of discussion this evening. Again, I go back to the discussion of manufacturing. I, I wanna try and keep this as far away from this individual property as possible, but I did actually walk the property this afternoon, and there's, and Van Hoff can correct me. You have four permanent buildings there, right? Or is there five? And then there's a bunch of quoset huts, right? There's four, right, yeah. The red barn, the main building, the building on the side, equipment on the shed on the, one on the back. So, right now, there's four large buildings on a farm right now. Um, if this brewery comes in and utilizes one of those buildings, then nothing really changes. If they, I, I don't anticipate them, again, I, I don't envision a, well, I'll use the ugly, uh, cooling towers that thankfully are coming down. I don't envision those cooling towers sitting there, and they can't, because it goes through the process. The ma, the maximum height that can be in an R-20 is thirty-five feet, Eric? So, there can't be anything greater than thirty-five feet high. So, that's a, you know, roughly a three-story building. If it's down above in a hill where the, where the equipment shed is or the barn is, you're not gonna see it. You're still gonna see, have that beautiful view up and over the top. There's manufacturing going on in the property now, as Mr. Aguirre mentioned, and I walked through, they, they're grinding up wood chips right now. Much louder process than making beer. Making beer is pretty quiet until you start putting it in cans. You have to really listen for the bubbles in the, uh, in the fermentation process. I, I visited a, a brewery last Thursday, a very large brewery, that I don't anticipate this being anywhere near the size. Has the ability to can five to six thousand cases per day with five people. I don't anticipate Ragged Island Brewery, and hopefully they do, because that's more economic impact back to the town, if they can get up to five, six thousand cases a day. Mr. Grace here might be great if he does that. So, um, I am in favor of going forward with this, starting the process to hopefully save our farms and grow some business here in town.
Um, motion to approve the proposed zoning ordinance amendment for inclusion of a farm brewery use in the Portsmouth zoning code, Chapter 405, Article 2.
405?
Article 2 and 5, sorry. Article 2 and 5.
Yes. Ms. Gleason?
We all know where this is headed, but just one question, because I think it's fair to ask. While you were at that brewery, did you see how many trucks were coming in and out to pick up the five thousand cases per day that are produced?
I did not. It was late in the day, so I, I did not.
Would it be fair to say that that's part of the operation that you did not witness? That could affect any and all breweries?
At that point in time, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
My concern.
Yep. And I have a concern, I mean, I could be concerned with that, too. There's trucks going in and out of Island Garden Shop right now, every day. I don't anticipate there being many more going in and out than currently go in and out of Island Garden Shop with trees and shrubs and two vans. Any other comments from the council? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four to two. Do I have a, uh, motion to take a five-minute recess before we go on with everything else? And I gotta, gotta remember to get Ms. Pedro. Five minute. Annual Veterans Day Ceremony for American Legion. Motion to approve?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Request permission to conduct the annual fundraiser for, raise for open space for the Equidnic Island Land Trust. This starts at the Glen, goes through, uh, across Sandy Point, through, I don't know, the woods. I can't remember what the woods are called, but, you know, it's a, I hope it doesn't rain, cause that's a muddy trail if it does.
That's where I got, that's where I got this.
From walking that, and then back down Wapping Road, back to the Glen.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. New business number three. We have an update on the Spruce Acres that was supposed to take place last meeting with Mr. Allen was not available, so we're doing it tonight. Welcome back.
Good evening again. Chuck Allen from the Equidnic Land Trust. I think this matter had come before you with regard to a letter which we had sent out to donors about the progress we were making at Spruce Acres. So, in part, I wanted to reach out and update you tonight, but I do believe that there were some questions also that certain council members had with respect to Spruce Acres, so I wanted to specifically address those. As was alluded to tonight, the construction is underway on the parking lot, which is the one component that we need to complete before we feel that it's safe to have public access. We have been working on the trail system, which I just have a diagram that, or a map that shows, uh, the new trail system. We are putting up kiosks, and also, um, we have just received a grant to put interpretational signage, which will deal with the history of farming in Portsmouth, the history of this property, um, native habitat on the property, and, oh, and watershed protection. So, we will have, and now, those will all be out along the trail. So, the trail system's pretty much in place. The buildings have been made fully intact. We have spent in two years over sixty-eight thousand dollars in capital improvements on the property to improve the buildings, the trails, to get, uh, the property, uh, in, in good shape. We've replaced all the roofs on all the buildings, so it is getting up to shape at this point. So, we expect that we will be open for the, for public use, hopefully by November 1st, assuming that, um, our Portsmouth Contractors East Coast Construction get it done by then. They're, they're working diligently on it. It just took us forever to get a physical alteration permit. It took us over eight months to get that permit, which held up all of our construction on, on the parking lot.
Is that through DOT?
That's from DOT. Yep.
The curve, yeah.
That's from DOT, yep. So, that's pretty much where we are with the property. I know that there was a question about the rental of the property. When we purchased the property, there was a tenant in the premises at that time. She left the, it was a couple, and they left the premises. We were not, at that point, in a position to move into the property. We are still in the process of assessing the cost of doing that, and it's far more expensive than we thought it was going to be to convert that building to office use. So, in the interim, we have rented it out to a family who, he works at Raytheon, they've just moved into the area. That is a short-term rental, so we are keeping our options open and trying to figure out a way to move there. But it is a significant cost, and we don't really wanna spend two years trying to fundraise a new office when we could be fundraising open space acquisitions. So, that is our core mission, and we don't wanna fall away from that. So, we're gonna have to do it when we, when we can actually find the time and the money. Hopefully, someone will come forward who has an inclination to help fund that project. Questions? Yes.
How long are those trails?
About two miles, yep.
Ms. Pedro.
Oh, thank you. So, yeah, so a lot of people have asked me about the rental, because that was not what was proposed to us when you gave your, you know, talk, when you were trying to solicit the funds from the town of Portsmouth for the $300,000. And I have the backup here, and in several places, you know, you talk about the ALT headquarters and, you know, while Spruce Acres Farm would have ALT office headquarters in the farmhouse, event space in the barn, you know, back here, it's the same thing. It's, you know, several places. There is an existing house that we plan on converting into a modest permanent home for ALT's administrative office. Nowhere does it ever say about renting it. It says it here, too. And then, you know, I have a copy of the, and you said it several times, "We're moving our operations there," you know? So, I just feel like, a lot of the people that have asked me about it, I don't know what to say to them. And, and I feel bad that this didn't happen as it was proposed. And then I was looking at the contract, and the contract, I don't know, it just seems to me that if we're partners, Portsmouth and the land trust, in this conservation of this property, it seems like it reads that you need to tell us when there's changes in your use of the property. And I think that that's a change of use in the property, that you decided to rent the house instead of making your office there. So, I was just perplexed about that.
Can I respond?
Sure. That's why I'm, that's.
So, as far as us moving our offices, our intent has not changed. Our timing probably has, but I don't think I ever suggested that we would be doing it immediately. It was always going to take the time to do an assessment of the cost, of what it would take to convert over that farmhouse to an office, and also fundraising it. We are a small organization, we're fairly hand-to-mouth. We do not have funds readily available to make a big construction investment like that. We have to fundraise everything that we do. As far as the contract is concerned, I would suggest, and I'll defer to your solicitor on this, but that there is an outzone for the buildings on the property. What the town contributed to was the protection of the open space. And certainly, if we did anything that was adverse to that conservation easement on the open space, we would certainly have to come back to you. But that is what was protected by the town of Portsmouth, is that open space, not the outzone, which is the buildings. That doesn't mean that I shouldn't come to you and give you a full report on what's happening at Spruce Acres and all aspects of it, and I intend to do that, because I view this as a public property, and we will certainly do that. We expect it to have public uses, we expect to have community gardens, we expect to have event space. So, certainly, we want it to be a public space, but whether ALT moves its offices to Spruce Acres or not is not in any way gonna affect the recreational use of this property by the residents of the town of Portsmouth. I guarantee you of that. We will do as much programming as we suggested we will do, but we will have to move our offices at the time that we can actually afford to do that.
Yeah, I just came across a place in the contract where it said, it talks about the outzone, "To maintain a building envelope outzone," which, by the way, was never mentioned in your original spiel, but anyway, here it is in the contract. "The buildings will be used exclusively for agricultural office, storage, learning center, agricultural arts, and craft retail." And that's, and that's the outzone, and that says the outzone.
But, but understand that the property was rented, was residentially rented when we purchased the property.
Yep, and then, and then they moved out, right?
All we did was replace one tenant with another tenant. And that is deferring, so that small amount of rent is deferring very large capital expenditures that we're making in the property. So, it's not like we're coming away with revenue from Spruce Acres. It is, it's, it's taking away a small amount of a, of a big capital campaign that we have done on the property to improve it for the betterment of the people of Portsmouth and Middletown.
All right. Well, I'm glad you're here, because it does say, "The grantor shall notify the grantee in writing of any intended use or intent to engage in any activity when such use or activity requires notice." You know, in other words, changes to what you're gonna do. So, that's one of the reasons I put it on. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions for Mr. Allot?
I have a question. Mr. Gleason. Would you care to comment about my comments about, about why ALT didn't consider similar property in size, I would guess, for the Van Hoff property? Did you ever think about that acquisition?
Mr. Gleason, we consider all properties with the landowners come to us. We have a prioritization strategy, that we look at every single piece of property. The bottom line is, we can't, we do not have the resources to protect every piece of open space in Portsmouth. If we looked at our top 20 priority parcels, we have determined that that equals about $40 million. We do not have $40 million to protect those priority parcels. We would love to have protected Van Hoff, or maybe to protect a portion of Van Hoff in the future. But we always, with a conservation easement, we always need to have an underlying viable use of that property. And what I see this as is a viable use going forward.
So, you feel like the trails will be open by November?
Yes.
People can use the property?
If that is not the case, for any reason, I will certainly let the council know through, through the town administrator.
That would be great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck? Onto new business number four.
Oh, you have questions? Question?
Was that said to the writer?
It is? If you would like to talk about Little Creek Preserve?
No, I'd like him to talk about it. Put it on here.
The letter that was submitted.
Go ahead. The letter.
The letter that was submitted gave an update on, on both properties. Because the town hadn't contributed to Little Creek, I didn't feel the need to address it. I can certainly do so. We are in the process of trying to make some improvements there as well. That, too, will have a trail system that is directly adjacent to the Secana Greenway Trail, so that will have openings from the trail into this property, and that will be another park property, so there will be a picnicking area. There is a boardwalk down to Avernal Pond. We're trying to fundraise the replacement of that rickety boardwalk, and we hope to put a small parking lot there as well. So, that, too, will become a recreational property for the residents of Portsmouth. Okay? It would be right out on Bremen's Lane?
Is it gonna be on the, on the property, preserve?
It would be on our, yes, it would be on our property. It would be a pervious parking area.
It's not gonna be paid.
It is not going to be paid. Yep.
Thank you. Thanks, Chuck. Now, on to new business number four. Discussion and Action, Equidnic Island Planning Commission's Year and Report and Update. Mr. Kessin, you asked to bring this forward?
I asked to bring this forward, and I actually met with John, and we spent an afternoon together. And I forgot the lady's name.
Allison.
Allison's. But the reason I, the reason I'm bringing this forward is, on page three of your report, under Municipal Column 4200, I think the town paid you in February, when I looked at the, when I looked at the bills. Bill pay.
It's right here.
That's all I know. So, there's, there's an error in the report. Was this voted by the, by the board?
Yeah.
I mean, everybody makes a mistake, I get it. It's, I've been pretty busy doing other things, that was the only thing I noticed on the report.
You know, I swapped eyes here. 4200 Municipal Income, okay, the reason for that is, the income was posted in the previous fiscal year, because that's when it was invoiced, that's when it's realized. So, in our recent compilation, which we will be distributing, there's an additional note. So, in our, in our audit from the close of the 2017 fiscal year, there's a note in there indicating the dates of the income being realized. And in the recent compilation that we just concluded for our abbreviated fiscal year, we didn't do a third audit, we did a compilation, there's an additional note in there that also clarifies that question for you.
Right, because right now, it looks like the income.
It does, I agree.
From the check register.
Exactly.
Was a February date, not a January.
Right, I agree with you, and that's why we asked the auditor to clarify that in the compilation.
But this error was voted by the board? Prove?
It's, it's a draft.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, this is a timing issue, because we forwarded this as a draft on the end of August.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John or Allison? Thank you, guys, for sitting through the evening in Farm Talk. Next up, we have correspondence. We have a letter of thanks for supporting the opposition to the Navy's fence move, the annual report, financial statements from the Portsmouth Water and Fire District, and Cost Communications Economic Impact Study, which is.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. We have upcoming meetings on October 22nd at 7:00 PM, regular council meeting. The November 13th meeting, which is a Tuesday, will actually begin at 6:00 PM. That'll be our annual salute to our veterans. So, we'll do our veterans ceremony from 6 to 8, assuming 6 to 7, and then a regular council meeting at 7:00 o'clock. It may be 45 minutes, it may be an hour.
On the 13th?
15 minutes, on the 13th, yeah. But we'll start at 6:00 with the veterans ceremony, and then we'll roll into council meeting, council business after that. And then the 26th is our regular council meeting, which is, that is Thanksgiving week, right? Thanksgiving is the 29th? That's the Monday after Thanksgiving. Okay, good. Okay, so, Rich, if, if that is the case, Mark said he wasn't gonna be here Thanksgiving week, but he might be here that week for the police station update, if that works better for him. So, we had asked for the 13th.
We have a construction meeting tomorrow, I'll clear.
Okay.
Send a note to the council.
Any other need for?
13th is a.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, but there may be other council members here at that point, correct?
No.
Are there a time period to be?
No, probably won't be certified.
It won't be certified, most likely it won't be certified until the week after.
The second meeting.
All right, thank you. So, the second meeting may end up being the meeting where we have the new council this morning, which will be the 26th. So, yeah, it'd probably be best for him to be here on the 13th, just in case the 26th is a swearing-in ceremony instead of a regular council meeting.
Yeah, we'll make sure that happens.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you, everybody, have a great night.